Good evening, Santa Monica, and welcome to the May 26, 2021 meeting of the Santa Monica City Council, which is a continuation of our meeting of May 25, 2021, i.e. last night. May we call the roll, please, ma'am?
Yes, Councilmember Para.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Yes, number, Councilmember Para. Mayor Pro Tim McCowen.
Here.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Brock.
Here.
Councilmember. Councilmember Dela Torre. Mayor Pro Tim McCowen.
Here.
And Mayor Hamerich.
Here.
Councilmember Brock.
Here.
And we are back on the budget. I think that we'll begin. Here. And our city manager will tell me more about how we're going to go about this. We are back on with our questions from last night. And our city manager will tell me more about how we're going to go about this. With our discussion and finally. Questions from last night.
So, Mayor, let me.
Which should be answered, and then we will move into discussion and find your motion.
2021 through 2023. Let me read the item budget. You don't know what it is. This will be 2021. It's the financial status update this will year 2021 through 2023. Proposed budget and fiscal year 2021, 22.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and members of the city council. We received a number of questions from you last night at the end of the meeting. In the interest of keeping the city council and trying to move forward. Questions from you last night at the end of the meeting. In the interest of keeping the meeting moving. And trying to move forward. What we'll do is we'll go through departments. We've tried to go in a somewhat logical order. I've asked department heads to respond by department. What we'll do is we'll go through each department. We try to go in a somewhat logical order because some of the questions overlap between departments. We can also take additional questions at the end if there are any. Follow-up questions. And if we've missed anything, do let us know. We've done our best to try to get you the information that you need. And if we've missed anything, do let us know. We've done our best to. And with that, I'm going to turn to the director of Public Works, Rick Balti.
Thank you, Lane. Good evening again, mayor and city council. I'm just going to go right into it. I have a list of questions from last night. The first question was regarding graffiti. What is the cost of rehiring a graffiti specialist? It's about $88,754 for a graffiti tech. And under normal circumstances, I would say yes, please give me an additional FTE. But in our current budget setting, that means cutting funding and services elsewhere, which I do not want to do. And so what I would offer, that rather than bringing on a third graffiti technician, Public Works could look at leveraging resources provisions to assist with graffiti removal. We could look at our painter at the Beach Maintenance Group to help out. We could work with our labor trainees. And especially, you know, when you have a painter who's working on a storage shed, that's not as important as removing graffiti that is offensive to protect classes, for instance. So I'd like to look at that first. Another option for public works is to look at augmenting a vendor contract. We of course have to work with the HR department to make sure that there are no impacts to the labor unions. And then last, if that is not acceptable to the council, we can certainly look at our ability to fund an additional FTE within our existing operating budget. But I would recommend against that because graffiti can be, can fluctuate over time. And I wouldn't want to find ourselves with a third graffiti tech and not be able to keep them busy, especially when our second graffiti tech recovers and returns to work full-time. Moving on to the next question. How much would it cost to restore paper shredding and recycling events? So for paper shredding, it costs us about $36,000 a year. The RRR division is actually restoring that, that event, the quarterly event, starting in June. And we will be able to do that within our existing budget. Could we create a grant-funded environmental justice fund for homes near the freeway? Office of Sustainability and the Environment could develop an environmental justice fund for homes near the freeway. They could apply for grants, public-private partnerships, managing grant programs, and reporting requirements. But this would require additional staffing, which we do not have at the moment. I did want to touch on some current efforts related to environmental justice that the Office of Sustainability and the Environment is working on. They are addressing some of this with a 2021, 2022 Civic Spark Fellow. That 10-month internship position in OSE will direct the work of a recent college graduate who will task with community resilience projects that focus on the neighborhoods surrounding the freeway. They will be assisting staff with the design and implementation of urban cooling strategies such as shade trees, reflective building materials, cool pavements, and heat pump HVAC systems. Staff will explore developing community cooling centers at city and non-city sites and ensure temporary shade structures are provided for community events. Also, currently, Office of Sustainability and the Environment are working with Southern California Edison in offering rebates for the installation of efficient electric heat pump units that provide both air conditioning and heating. OSE offers higher rebate amounts for low-income residents. Of course, with additional staff and a designated environmental justice fund, more residents and businesses in the Pico neighborhood could be targeted. And then finally, RAND and OSE recently partnered on a grant application to the California Energy Commission to plan for tactical decommissioning of gas lines in disadvantaged communities, with an emphasis on replacing gas end uses with efficient electric alternatives. An award announcement from the CEC is expected this summer. Also, additional opportunities for environmental justice work continue to be made available at the state and federal level. But again, OSE would need additional staff in order to apply for more grants, develop grant fund, and administer grant-funded programs. That was a mouthful, but I just wanted to share what OSE is working on right now. Next, pickleball. How do we find courts that we can restrike? This is something that a park planner would look at if the position requested by the Community Development Department is approved. There needs to be some evaluation of usage to ensure equity for all sports and the physical appropriateness of the site. How much would it cost to restripe a court for pickleball? So assuming an appropriate location is evaluated and properly sized, it would cost about $6,200 to resurface and restripe an existing court. This does not include the nets or any other pertinences for pickleball. Could pickleball association, could the pickleball association co-sponsor the cost? So there are two vehicles for accepting outside funding or donations. One is Give Santa Monica, and we are Santa Monica. However, it's my understanding that the former program is currently suspended, while the latter is not formatted to accept funding specifically for park and sports enhancement. Next question was on the Fourth Street Bridge. How much would it cost if we were to install fences? The city council actually previously approved the active transportation program-funded Fourth Street Enhancement Expo Linkages Project, which runs from Colorado Avenue to Olympic. This includes the installation of six-foot fences and pedestrian lighting. The project costs about $2.3 million and is approaching 100% design. But because of the restructuring, we don't currently have staff to execute the construction, and we would have to consider pausing on other projects to deliver this specific project. The next question was about street cleaning. If biweekly, instead of monthly sweeping was implemented, how much would the savings be? So there are two points that I need to make here. If there was a savings, it would be in the RRR fund, not in the general fund. Any savings in the RRR fund would be obviously used for RRR purposes. The only impact that street sweeping may have on the general fund is related to parking citations, which is a general fund revenue. The second point I need to make is that we would need an additional motor sweeper operator, whether we increased our sweeping frequency to biweekly or weekly. Biweekly sweeping may reduce the fuel usage, but those minimal savings would be eaten up by the cost of replacing our parking signage. And we would have to re-educate the public, and that might cause confusion on the weeks that street sweeping occurs and does not occur. The next set of questions pertains to the Trades Intern Program. What is the cost of restoring some or all? It costs about $63,000 for each trade intern, and then it's an additional $63,000 for the administrative costs in the Human Services Division. So if we were to restore the entire program, the total cost would be close to $700,000. Can we get grants for the Trades Interns Program? In 2007, the city used stimulus funding to cover the cost of two positions that supported the green technologies for two years. The positions were in HVAC and electrical. Staff can certainly see if the intern program would be eligible for the pending American Jobs Plan that the Biden administration is working on. And there also appears to be grants within the U.S. Department of Labor that we can explore. Next, could we fund Trades Intern Programs out of RRR or the Big Blue Bus Enterprise Fund? We could explore funding interns with enterprise funds such as water, wastewater, stormwater, Big Blue Bus, and RRR. But you have to remember that those interns would have to be housed in and be performing the functions of the divisions that are funding them. Otherwise, it puts us in Prop 218 territory. So in other words, an RRR-funded intern would have to help with graffiti collection or bulky item pickup, or a Big Blue Bus-funded intern would have to be working in the mechanic shop, working on buses, or a wastewater-funded intern would have to be working in the trenches fitting a sewer pipe. So obviously, these are not the traditional trades, the trades such as carpenters, painters, plumbers, or electricians, but it's definitely a way to bring back the Trades Intern Program. And lastly, the question was, what percentage of the Trades Interns land the jobs for the city? We looked at some data going back to 2015, and since 2015, out of 24 interns, 18 landed full-time jobs, and nine of those 18 landed here in the city. And with that, I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions.
Councilmember Brock.
Hi, Rick. So let's go in order of, I guess, my questions. So you mentioned that there is planning for a fence along Olympic and to Fourth Street, but not necessarily Fourth Street Overpass?
No, it's on the, it's on Fourth Street running from Olympic to Colorado. And so on the bridge, there would be, there are plans to install a six-foot-high fence on both sides.
So if we just bifurcated the issue, and instead of saying we were doing the entire length right now, and we were just doing the fence over the freeway to prevent people who unfortunately decide that they want to jump, how much would that segment cost by itself? Because you gave me a long segment and a lot of money. So how much would it cost if you just do a fence over the overpass?
If all we wanted to do was install a chain-link fence on both sides of the, the bridge, we roughly looked at that cost, and it's in the area of $400,000. Pending Caltrans approval. Because you have to understand that this is a Caltrans bridge. It's a 60-year-old bridge, and there are certain requirements that come with that.
So it's not something we can call Santa Monica Fence and have them.
It's, no, it's, it's not something that we pick up the phone and have Santa Monica Fence put in, you know, $20 per linear foot of fence.
Wow. Okay, and there is no other way to do something that would be a restraining barricade over that bridge? Because the other bridges in Santa Monica have fencing, but not that one.
So again, because it's in the Caltrans right-of-way, there is a lengthy process that we would have to go through to, for Caltrans to review what sort of fence we want to install. They have specific requirements that we have to adhere to. So there's a timeline to contend with.
Okay. The street cleaning. I thought, and I, and I don't have that page in front of me. I thought there was a cost of restoring weekly street cleaning of $750,000 or something?
Yeah, so there is a.
There would be savings would be gasoline, and, and we might lose on parking tickets. But I was trying to find out originally if we had kept biweekly, that money is coming to you from our general fund, correct? Or am I totally wrong? This was my first.
No, the, the funding for the street sweeping is going from the RRR fund.
Which has nothing to do with the money we're allocating now anyway, then?
It's, it's, maybe I'm not understanding the, the question, but the, the budget is for all funds. But specifically for street sweeping, that funding is coming from the RRR fund. So any savings that you realize from street sweeping remains in the RRR fund and does not, cannot be used for.
Anything else.
Lifeguards or anything.
Other than the suicide fence or something like that. Okay, I understand that now, thank you. The pickleball courts. Last question. So you have a price on restriping if we found, if, if we found the courts that we wanted to designate for them. And I'm hearing it would probably be between $25,000 and $50,000, including nets and everything else. I'm giving you a very just rough thing. You said $6,000 per court to resurface and restrike. So, and, and you mentioned that we are equipped, or not equipped at this point, to accept donations or something like that, if the pickleball players wanted to fund that. And we've been able to find the courts.
I do not think we are equipped for that because the two vehicles that I mentioned, one of them is suspended, currently suspended, and the other is not framed to accept funding specific for park or sports court enhancements.
Councilmember, if I could ask, Andy Ego may be able to speak to that a little bit with the, I'm sorry, David Martin and CDD may be able to speak to that with the limited park planner position.
Yeah, sure, that, that's one of the types of projects that we would plan to use the proposed park planner for. Another example would be like the dog park at Reed Park, looking at that. So we'd certainly expect that that position would be able to help figure out how to implement that the pickleball court installation.
Okay, so we need to tell the pickleball players that they're in the queue, but it won't happen in July.
Councilmember, because, go ahead, David.
I was going to say, obviously, you know, if that position is approved, it will take time to get someone on board, to go through the recruitment and, and have someone who could do the work.
Okay. Thank you.
And councilmember, you would then need a consent item or otherwise to direct them to do that? Because directing them tonight for the project itself would be outside the budget.
No, I, I understand that. Well, unless we were going to add money to it for the pickleball courts, but I'm not convinced that we, that it's an urgent enough need, although I know I'm going to have hordes of pickleball players throwing wiffle ball-like pickleballs at me. But I want to make sure it's on our radar because it is a huge sport now throughout the West Coast. Well, thank you.
Tell the pickleball players that the first step is the limited-term park planner, which, which you may or may not move forward. Let me turn to the Department of Transportation. Oh, I'm sorry, it looks like Mayor Pro Tim.
Wait, Mayor Pro Tim McCowen? Um, yes, you're muted, but that's, but, um, I rather, I just want to clarify one thing. You mentioned as being an expense that would sort of negate any reason why we would go to biweekly. You mentioned having to change all of the street signage. Is it, and maybe it is, naive of me to believe that after 15 months or 14 months of our current street signage, as is, and just what we've been doing, so that everyone knows that on the first, you know, day of the month, of the first of that, you know what I'm saying? And everyone's been adhering to it. Why would, given the reason for our inability to go back to doing full production is still COVID-related, why wouldn't we be able to just extend what we've already been doing another year or so? And not change, you know, the whole structure of the city and sign?
Are you suggesting that we perhaps consider going to biweekly without the proper signage?
Yeah, with the current communication that we've been doing for 14 months, yeah. That's what I was suggesting.
Well, I think the, the whole thought was that if, say, the analysis that was done by RRR was that we would stick to the monthly program, we would go back to replacing the signs to properly show that it's the first week of every, every month. But it turned out to become a temporary situation because of COVID. So now, where with us landing on going, let's say we land on a biweekly from this point forward, we need to put appropriate signage, and I think that might also tune into the enforcement piece of it, wherein code, no code enforcement, but parking enforcement would have to have the proper signage for them to be able to issue the citations, I think.
And see, George.
COVID was a temporary situation.
That's the reason the signage is, is important. We can't do effective enforcement without having the signage reflect the timing so that no one can claim they weren't on, they weren't on notice.
You can start collecting parking revenue with street sweeping. And again, I just want to be clear, I support going back to regular street sweeping. I just am trying to, you know, also amplify the fact that the budget is so tight that there really aren't opportunities to make significant changes. And I do want in some trade interns. I'm still going to try to figure out a way to do that, but it's clearly not going to be with the RRR fund, so thank you.
So, well, does anyone else before, yes, councilmember Dela Torre?
Yes, Rick, thank you very much for answering the questions. I just, really quick, the, if, if we were to restore the trade interns at some level, would it be possible that part of their job can be graffiti abatement? Is that, is that something that they can do? Or, or did I hear that maybe it's not appropriate for the Trade Interns Program?
So the dilemma there is that the graffiti texts are funded by the general fund. And the general fund does not have the bandwidth to support the Trades Intern Program. And that's why we're looking at creative ways of bringing the program back by using the enterprise funds. And so if I were to say, go to Water Resources and say, can you fund an intern? They might be able to fund an intern, but that intern would have to be dedicated to fitting pipes in a trench or working with the Water Resources Protection Program to, you know, learn the trades. I couldn't take an intern that's funded by RRR and ask them to work on electrical work in the electrical shop? Because that puts us in Prop 218 territory.
Thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
Before I go back to councilmember Brock, who already had a turn, does anyone else have anything? Okay, councilmember Brock.
Rick, for the people in the audience who don't know, what's an RRR fund?
I'm sorry, that's the Resource Recovery and Recycling Division.
What was the proposition you mentioned? Didn't you?
Oh, Prop 218, I'm sorry. So when you have ratepayers, for instance, our water ratepayers, they're paying for a service specifically related to water, we cannot take those funds and use it for other purposes?
Okay, then my last question is, are we awarding any money into the, in the budget to your RRR fund? Because now I'm even more confused. And it was, you're asking for money to get the. And it was how you, you're asking for money to get the, the, um, street cleaning, right? That comes from us to the RRR fund?
That, that comes from the RRR fund balance. We're basically budgeting available RRR funds for that specific purpose.
Okay, all right, thank you. That clarifies things and I hope it clarifies for people who are watching our high-rated program.
Uh, so, um, uh, Rick, I have a couple of questions on the graffiti specialist. I've turned in and regularly turned in graffiti notices and people have gotten back to me and said the graffiti was gone on a fairly prompt basis. So what is the time lag between getting a notice and actually, um, removing the graffiti?
That depends on a few factors. Obviously, if, uh, we have an influx of multiple calls, uh, you know, obviously the, uh, timeline to respond to those calls is a little bit longer. Right now, we're in a situation where one of our graffiti, uh, technicians is out on intermittent leave because of health reasons. And so we actually only have one graffiti tech who's able to respond to all these calls. And that's why I'm suggesting, um, for us to find a way to leverage our other resources within Public Works to help with that workload, rather than bringing in a third graffiti technician who might, at the end of the day, we might not be able to keep those folks busy.
And, and on the trades intern and the enterprise funds, I, I mean, it just strikes me that when we talk about trade interns, water is an emerging topic and an emerging field of work, right? I mean, in the trade interns or, or is the focus on more general trade such as electrician? Or, uh, it, or, or could it be, uh, could the program be focused on more specific things such as pipe fitting?
So traditionally, the, the, the program has focused on our trade shops, which is your electrical shop, your carpentry shop, your paint shop, and your plumbing shop, and HVAC. Um, but really the goal of this program is really to reach out to our youth, um, those who are part of the justice system and try to equip them to be gainfully employed. And so I don't think that limiting it to those traditional trades is the goal here. I think, um, and I, I invite my colleagues from human services to chime in on this. But I think that if, if we're able to equip them with any sort of skill, that should be helpful to our youth and to our, uh, to the folks who needed to work out there.
Well, and, and so I was just, and, and actually working in the big blue bus shop, right? Would actually be giving them something that is, uh, a trade that is useful, I guess, right? Working on automotive vehicles which aren't going away anytime soon.
Absolutely. And, and I, I would just, um, add that, um, I still need to vet this, uh, this, this idea, uh, because I can feel virtual kicks under the table from my fund managers and from probably Ed King. But I'm just putting out here that there's a possibility to bring that program back using enterprise fund.
Great, um, thank you. And, and on the street cleaning, so when we change all the signs, right now the signs say weekly street cleaning. Am I right? We haven't changed any of them.
Correct.
So, and this may take George, so even if we don't clean it, it still says the same thing. And so we've still given them warning that they can't park there for two hours or however long it is for the street cleaning at a particular time. And, and so why is it, and so why is changing the signs so necessary? If we may increase this soon, number one, and number two, what is the cost to change all the signs?
So as Rick said, on a temporary basis during COVID, um, we thought it was all right to not change the signs and just treat this as part of the emergency. If we're going to go to a longer-term scheme, um, and we want to do enforcement and have the tickets be readily enforceable, um, we probably are going to need to change the signs to ensure that there's adequate notice. So it's, it's a longer-term thing. If we are going to go with a temporary thing, again, for some short period of time, um, then, you know, potentially we could make the decision not to change the signs, but that would risk, um, the enforceability of some of the tickets.
So, this opportunity I can, just to remind everyone, both on trades interns and street sweeping, that we're in a study session. So particularly on trades interns, um, we will need, because you raised quite wisely for the first time last night, that we might be able to do trades interns out of the other funds. We will take that back after the study session if that's something we hear from you, you're interested in, and do more work on how could we actually do that? What would the funding look like before we bring you back the budget on June 22nd? The thing I would say on street sweeping is that there's both the enforceability piece and then quite frankly, there's the resident frustration piece. So street sweeping is something that we get a high volume of activity and frustration on when there's confusion. And every other week's schedule is very hard. It's not even like first week of the month, which is hard of the nut, hard enough because when does the first week begin is something that not everyone agrees on. I say this as someone who gets, uh, both street sweeping tickets and knocks from my neighbor saying, you haven't moved your car yet. Can you please move your car to our street? Which, which I appreciate, Hoda, if you're out there. Um, so I, I think that, um, it, it is really, um, important to have clarity. Uh, we can look at the trades intern and the, um, and the trade-offs there. But I do think because it's coming out of RRR, my recommendation, um, you know, my professional recommendation would be also our, our team, when they looked at this, we have neighborhoods like Mid-City that have both commercial and residential. Um, and doing it, um, every other week is okay for most of our city, but not all of it. And once you're running those operations, it, it's really hard to do every other weekend, some places and every week. Um, so we might take these back and see if we can work with them and, and try to, because I understand the mayor Protem saying, well, what if I want to use that RRR money for the trades interns program? Um, and I think we can take those back and, and try to come up with some solutions for you.
Thank you. And those are my questions. So unless anybody has additional questions, I think we can move on. And, and thank you, Rick. That was really helpful and very thorough.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rick. And, uh, Ed King, are you with us?
Yes, good evening. Thanks, Lane. Good evening, uh, mayor and councilmembers. Um, uh, the first two questions in our queue are related to parking structure three. Uh, the first question is, what is the annual revenue, uh, pre-COVID? Um, annual average, uh, revenue was $1.5 million. Um, calendar year to date for 2021, we're at about $535,000. So we're tracking close to what we were at pre-COVID. If, uh, the year runs out, uh, as predicted, we'll, we'll come in at, uh, probably just over 1.3 million. Um, the second question regarding parking structure three, uh, would loss of garage? Uh, loss of garage be, uh, revenue neutral? Uh, the staff's model is that, uh, there'd be about a 10% loss in annual revenue. We're looking at, um, assuming we get back to pre-COVID numbers, about $150,000 annually in, in the loss. Um, the next question is regarding, um, the downtown Santa Monica Inc., uh, safety ambassadors. So can we use 53, FTA 5307 program or transit safety ambassadors? I think a few of you acknowledged, uh, last night that, uh, Big Boot Bus has been very successful in securing federal funding. Uh, one of the main reasons is the staff, uh, follows the rules and regulations very carefully. Um, actually yesterday afternoon, uh, the staff participated in our, um, FY 17 through 20 triennial audit with the FTA, uh, auditors and the Region 9 office. And I'm really happy to report that there were no deficiencies in 23 specific areas that the auditors reviewed. Uh, those ranged from, uh, financial compliance, uh, drug and alcohol compliance, our preventive maintenance program, uh, and a myriad of other areas. So, um, really proud of the fact that we, um, didn't have any findings and it's, uh, credits the staff that they follow the rules and regulations. Um, I just want to remind you that with any 5307 funding, FTA requires a, a competitive procurement process. Um, this, um, would fall under that rule. Um, and the other, um, challenge with, um, with this program is that it, you know, we, if, if we do provide security service to a certain population or to a certain, uh, percentage of riders, we have to do that throughout our system. So we would have to provide security service at all of the stops, um, and all of the routes within the city with this type of a program. Um, and then lastly, you know, we looked at our data this afternoon and, and the majority of incidents don't occur at bus stops downtown. Uh, they occur on the bus, uh, majority of the incidents over the last two years have been on the, um, uh, Route 3, Lincoln, um, and, and south of, um, of Pico. Uh, the, uh, the other two routes are Pico Route 7, a lot of incidents east of, 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 um, Lincoln Avenue. And then, uh, the Route 1 where we have a number, um, a high number of incidents down in Venice, which is Santa Monica Boulevard, um, and the, um, and, and Santa Monica east of, of, of downtown. So, um, I, I do want to suggest an alternative and, um, I, I would have to vet this with Chief Seabrooks and, um, and Lori and our HR team. But, um, maybe a, a potential better alternative, um, would be to partner with, uh, PD, uh, to fund some of the PSO positions that you talked about last night. Um, that would provide additional security, um, at our stops, uh, downtown. It would also provide some additional security, um, on all of our routes that align or, or, um, are parallel or perpendicular to the, to the parks. Um, and, and it would be a way for us to help pay for those, um, those couple of positions. So, um, those were the two questions that I have and I'm happy to, and answer any questions that you may have on, on that information. Thanks.
Uh, councilmember Brock and then councilmember McCowen. Mayor Protem McCowen.
I was muted. We couldn't.
Bill, you're muted. We can't hear you. And haven't heard you at all.
Okay, um, Mayor Protem McCowen was first, but with her indulgence, I'll go. Um, so parking structure three. So one and a half million dollars in revenue, that goes to the general fund?
Yes.
So, and there is no, I, I know we're going to at some point demolish it and build affordable housing there. And I support that as a long-range solution. But it would appear to me that we could pay with one and a half million dollars over the next 12 months. That would pay for part of the increases we're looking for. Is there any, let me ask you this, Ed. And I'm sorry, I was thinking instead of asking you the direct question. What is the amount of immediate repairs needed for parking structure three? And what is, in other words, what's the offset? Because the offset may be more than keeping it open for an extra 12 months.
Yes, the offset, councilmember Brock, is, um, about 4.5 million to do the seismic retrofit and replacing the three elevator carriages that we would really recommend, highly recommend doing. Um, that funding is not in the CIP and, um, those are just really baseline numbers.
Okay, so now if we, if we took a microscope and narrowed that down, what is the amount needed for the next 12 months to keep the parking garage functional and, and the elevators working without replacing the full carriages?
We're doing it with a lot of duct, duct tape and, um, a lot of love and care right now. I'd have to get back with, with our parking operations team and, and our, our partners at, uh, Public Works to, to really give you a better number. Um, so we could come back with that number at the, uh, June 22nd meeting. And I see our city manager may want to comment.
And, and can we get higher quality duct tape?
Though I would like to say something about this, as somebody who's been working on this for, go ahead. I'm sorry.
There's, there's a massive disconnect I fear going on here. I believe Ed said $150,000 a year and councilmember Brock said 1.5 million dollars a year. So I just want to clarify what the.
I heard 1.5 million. 1.5, 1.5 million is the revenue? What's the net?
The net loss would be about $150,000 a year.
So it's costing us $1,650,000 to operate the garage?
No, no, you asked last night, I believe, what is the net loss if we, um, close parking structure three?
Right, I heard the 150,000. I know that. The net revenue was 1.5 million. Or the net gross revenue, so I, and I know with repairs and everything else, there's a difference. I'm not trying to make it more complicated.
Okay, so I see eight in the hand.
Mayor, I, I think it's really important to clarify what's happening here. Parking structure three, if you close it, uh, the parking goes to other parking structures. So the loss from closing it is $150,000 a year. That, that's, I, I just think that's a key point for everybody.
Thank you. That's, that is important. So we're not losing a million five. We're not really losing, we're losing chump change in relation to the overall picture. That's important for me to know. Thank you.
And, and councilmember Davis, I see you, but I, I really need to address this because, uh, councilmember Brock and other councilmembers who are looking parking structure three. I went to Ted Lieu, uh, with four earmarks and this is the one that the federal government chose to give us $2 million on to demolish this parking structure. Uh, so we have $2 million that we didn't have before to demolish it, right? Because it is that ideal combination of doing affordable housing and, uh, it, and, um, and removing the parking, right? Um, where it's not needed. And, uh, I am intent on keeping this, right? I said no to the movie theaters because I didn't think it would be a revenue producer relative to the parking structure. But I do believe the affordable housing delivers significant value and I've seen the pushback online, I've seen the petition. And I have to say, this is a project that has been in the works for almost three years. I personally have gone out there to get funding for it and will go out and get more funding. And I am intent on going forward with this as soon as possible.
Okay, I had one, one more question of Ed.
Um, councilmember, may I jump in for just one minute because I do think clarification. Uh, for, for better or worse, this will be on the consent calendar at your next meeting. So plenty of opportunity to discuss the policy. I do have both Gigi and Andy, um, texting me to say their understanding is that the net losses is zero, um, that the parking does go elsewhere. Uh, either way, councilmember, it's $150,000 versus the upgrades at most.
I, I'm, I'm fine with that. I understand. I, I think I've clarified it and I think we've clarified it for people in, in the city as well this way. So thank you so much for your, uh, help on that. Ed, the, you mentioned PSOs and that the bus system, uh, if they were to gain some benefit from public safety officers, might be able to have some funding to help assist in the, in those salaries. Was I correct in hearing that? Yes. Okay, thank you so much. I'm good.
Councilmember Davis.
Well, I, I just want to clarify that we're not closing parking structure three tomorrow. It will continue to operate until we are prepared to demolish it. So it's not as if it's gonna sit there fallow, not earning money. I mean, I, I think there's, it sounded as if people thought it was gonna close and then, oh my gosh, we're gonna lose all this income. That's not gonna happen. Am I correct about that? Until we're able to get full permission to demolish it and have the funds to do so?
That's correct.
Correct. So, so until that time comes, which could be a week or next year, we're gonna continue to operate parking structure three and get the revenues from it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, councilmember McCow, uh, Mayor Protem McCowen, I'm gonna get this tonight. I swear I am.
Not that petty. Um, hey, hi, Ed. Um, so it's funny that you brought up, um, with us funds potentially being able to partner with PD to pay for some PSOs because one of the things I was gonna ask you tonight that I forgot to ask last night is what options we may have for, um, you all to partner with PD to fund crossing guards? And, um, or some additional crossing guards? And I was just wondering if that was something. if that was something that had been considered, or if at least it could possibly be considered, because I think, you know, given the conversation last night, I think that'll end up being some version of a priority in our discussion, so I just wanted to put that on your radar too.
Okay. I'm sorry?
It's transportation adjacent.
Yes, transportation adjacent, but not in the direct, you know, either employ or a operation or oversight of security and safety of bus riders. But we will absolutely, you know, we will reach out to the FTA, our Region 9 office, and ask that question, because it's a good question. I don't know that anybody's ever done it that I'm aware of in the region or the state, but doesn't mean that we couldn't try it.
Specifically, it would be potentially the crossing guards related to the middle schools and high schools where we do have ridership. I was one of those seven riders that go to, though that exists, so maybe there's a way, just throwing it out there.
Okay, thank you.
No more questions? Ed, thank you so much, let's turn to Chief Seabrooks.
Thanks, Ed. Good evening, everyone. So by way of addressing some of the questions that came up yesterday, was a question about whether or not crossing guard salaries might be an eligible expense for the, I'm trying to see what grant program this is, forgive me just a second, Safe Routes to School. And unfortunately, we learned that the crossing guard salaries are not considered an eligible grant expense according to the provisions of the Safe Routes to School program. Other questions that came up involved the corner studies, which are the assessments of intersections to determine the efficacy of crossing guard staffing. And what that entails is one of our, when we had a lead, either the lead and/or the crossing guard supervisor go out to the various corners several days a week during the school year, in the morning and in the afternoon, and they count all of the young people and people who are crossing using the crossing services, and what that does, and we do it either by specific request, or we do it as part of a random audit so that we can ensure that our resources are being deployed appropriately. And then we prioritize the intersections and we look at, we determine whether or not it's a high priority intersection or not, and what we use as part of that is what Mayor Protem McCowen spoke to yesterday, which is sampling collision data. So we look, we utilize the collision data also to determine whether or not that the priority of the intersection and the crossings that are actually occurring are appropriate. So we look at vehicle accident data, we look at volume of historical pedestrian student usage, and then the amount of vehicular traffic that's in a particular location. So as you know, we currently have 20 locations that are staffed and are already deemed high priority, and those should be continued to be serviced and are being serviced with existing staff. Part of the conversation was to determine if more intersections could then be added, and we do have seven additional that would benefit from being staffed, and the cost of that additional is $110,872, and the amount for that is because these extras require a lead to assist the supervisor in overseeing that process. Before I go any further, I wanted to make sure that I'm addressing the questions, that any other questions that might be around this particularized issue.
So can someone tell me whether Safe Routes to School is a state or federal program? And I can look it up, don't worry about it. But it sounds to me as if Safe Routes to School needs a little legislative update.
Couldn't hurt.
That's all I'm asking, okay.
Couldn't hurt.
So were there any other questions regarding the crossing guard component for it? Okay, not hearing any? Moving on, let me see, there were questions regarding the public safety, I'm sorry, public services officers that came from Councilmember Brock, and with respect to that, the police department certainly would benefit from having additional public safety officers, I'm sorry, public services officers, those officers are civilian personnel who act as additional eyes and ears for the police department, they engage in the parks and in the areas adjacent to the parks, and as Ed King just mentioned, we will look at how we might partner differently around the bus zones because a large number of our parks, in fact, the vast majority of them, that have at least one bus stop somewhere in proximity, with a couple of exceptions throughout all of the parks. But that may be an option to help to be a force multiplier, and so we'll look at whether or not there's a creative, innovative way to expand the duties of the PSOs without unnecessarily, well, we'd have to do it in conjunction with the HR department, because there's likely going to be some concerns about job classification language, but we need to look at that and determine whether or not that's in fact so before we make any pronouncements about that. So to answer the question more directly, the police department certainly would benefit. We have a number of our PSO staff who are out on extended injuries, and so anything that can be done to bolster that number so that we can continue to do that important work would be appreciated. And I think that may address the majority of the questions that came up. I do believe that it bears noting that there was a comment made that the police department had asked for, or the inference that could be reasonably drawn from the comment, was that the police department was asking for supplemental enhancements to expand its programmatic actions in terms of both adult and juvenile diversion, and that was not correct. We're not submitting any enhancements, we're looking to expand that focus as part of our ongoing maintenance of effort in those areas.
Councilmember Brock.
Hi, Chief.
Yes.
I wanted to clarify the cost. I had asked last night about adding six PSOs, and I believe that included one supervisor as well, and I think that cost, I was asking to make sure I had the amount right, but I think that's $674,491.58, and part of that could be offset then by the big blue bus system. Both, I know downtown had asked, and I think the uniform presence, even though they're civilians, would be very helpful in our parks as well, and give our police department more eyes and ears and more help, and I'm glad to hear that you second that. Is six enough?
Well, I think that there's a, you know, we can always ask, we can always say, well, what exactly is enough? I think that there has to be a level of reasonableness attached to it. So with that in mind, I think six would be sufficient because what with the staffing, presuming a full staffing complement of able-bodied PSOs at our existing staffing level, plus six, which restores four that were removed as a result of the budget cuts and provides two extra for, you know, life emergencies that always pop up, it gives us the agility that we would need in order to conduct the work that the PSOs do, which is very important, both in the parks, protecting City Hall, City Hall East, as well as other obligations that we impose on them.
And I had also asked in one of my questions last night, I had suggested we add a half squad for HLP officers, and specifically, I mentioned because we have very few resources, and I understand the problem with the associate resources that we need open on weekends also, but I was dismayed to find that most of our homeless services are not open on weekends, and in addition to that, we have, we don't have the ability with the current staffing to have HLP officers available on weekends. So I had asked for the price of four HLP officers. For those that don't know, it's the Homeless Liaison Program. They are specially trained to help work with our homeless humans on the streets of Santa Monica, and they are, in my estimation, incredibly effective. I see it's $850,000, is that correct, or can that be lowered?
Well, it depends on where the officers are pegged salary-wise, so that number is generally accurate because it's not necessarily a first-year officer who's coming in to do the work, so we take a mid-range officer who's been on a couple of years and has a broader understanding of municipal policing in Santa Monica, and then we have them do the work. So that would be accurate as it relates to that. I will say that it is a challenge to have the homeless liaison officers out in the field in the evenings when there is no services, when a lot of their work, as you know, as everyone knows, is linking the individuals with whom we have contact with services and having the providers there on hand to make the connection. In the absence of that, we have officers who'll be interfacing with folks under a variety of circumstances with no ability to make that direct connection. So I would suggest that, to the degree that it's possible, where those support services are there, then we talk about the placement of the additional officers on the weekends, because then their work has that much more validity attached to it.
And the last question for you that I had asked last night, and I'm not sure, well, yeah, that would come under not your purview, but possibly your suggestion, I had asked that we add one Los Angeles County DMH embed with us. We have two in the city now. Would a third, in your educated opinion, would a third help our police and our homeless services, and especially taking care of those who unfortunately are showing signs of mental illness in the city?
Absolutely. We've had the two Department of Mental Health workers embedded in the police department since roughly, I believe, about 2013, 14, somewhere in there, and they have been exceedingly helpful, not just with our homeless population, but also with our home population that is going through mental crisis, and they've been instrumental in being able to cut through bureaucracy that our line-level officers just don't have the ability to do on a standard 51-50 or psychiatric hold. So any additional assistance, because quite honestly, 20% of our calls are affiliated with homelessness, and we are interacting with people under a variety of crisis-like circumstances, so whatever can be done to secure additional mental health workers is, I won't say it's a remedy, but it certainly works to the advantage of the city as a whole.
Thank you so much, Chief.
And just as a side comment, the approximations that we have on what a fully burdened clinician would cost is about $200,000 a year.
Per clinician?
Yes, yes. And that presumes, you know, over time, that's just a rough approximation.
So I have a couple follow-ons to this, because, you know, there is a lot of discussion across the country about shifting police calls that may not be appropriately directed to the police, but rather to mental health workers or, you know, different kinds of responders. And Councilmember Brock asked about four HLP officers, and my question to you would be, in the balancing of the mix we want, and particularly HLP officers, would we, do we need to pair HLP teams with other teams, or can we be sending out teams of uns sworn personnel to respond to some of the calls that the HLP officers are going to?
Well, there's, I think in theory it sounds very good, but when people are in the midst of psychological crises, there's a number of challenges at play, particularly since we don't know what the triggering effect was and where that stands. As it is, we have one of the mental health workers embedded with our patrol services, and then, you know, when we couple that with the de-escalation training and the mental health training that our officers receive, it enables us to have successful resolutions to quite a number of problems across the spectrum. Equally, we embed the mental health worker, the remaining mental health worker with our HLP team. So what I would envision were we to get additional mental health clinicians on staff, we could further embed them in with the homeless liaison program, because I think that that's where we see the most success with it, and then, of course, they're readily available to our patrol forces in a larger, you know, when the circumstances so warrant, but the more direct interactions occur and more successfully with the HLP officers.
And that was really my question, I think there's a balance here between the sworn officers and the mental health officers, and I think it probably needs more discussion, more study as to what the ideal balance is, other than we don't have enough.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I'm frozen, people always talk about my poker face, which is particularly good when I'm frozen on screen. I want to jump in here to mention two other programs because I think they're relevant. So you have the Department of Mental Health workers currently embedded with the police department as well as the help team. The two other things that you have in this proposed budget or otherwise, we have been working with one-time funds already allocated for a partnership with LA County Department of Mental Health for a therapeutic transfer pilot, which is a van of mental health professionals on the streets that are available at the call of police or fire to respond and provide immediate mental health professional advice, also to proactively engage in mental health on the streets. So that is the LA County Department of Mental Health taking their people out of offices and onto the streets to work with homeless populations. That is scheduled to be housed out of the prior Fire Station 1. The city's contributions would be only funds for a van driver and that location and a little bit of equipment to link them with our services. The county provides the rest, and Dr. Sharon does believe that that ultimately can be linked more broadly across LA County for a comprehensive LA County mental health response. That will be a pilot. The other pilot that is in your budget that I was going to discuss later, but I do think it's better to discuss now so that you're thinking about them all together, is the Community Response Unit, which would be out of the Santa Monica Fire Department. That is two FTE positions in the Santa Monica Fire Department, one FTE firefighter prevention, one FTE firefighter paramedic prevention, a total of $479,643 for those two positions. It would create a community response pilot program to respond out of the fire department, the low acuity calls, engage with homeless individuals for prevention purposes, and connect individuals experiencing homelessness with services. We will have to engage in a meet and confer to confirm long-term costs and impacts before that pilot can launch, and there are other modulations you could use of that program. That is in addition to, in the current budget, your street teams, the C3 and hamster teams. This is a lot of on-the-street services. That is in part what I heard from you that I wanted, that you wanted, but this is a lot of pilots trying to find the right model, our 3-1-1 program also potentially being linked here, trying to find what is the right model going forward for response when what we know we have is mental health crises on the street, though as Chief Seabrooks said, those sometimes can involve health crises or law enforcement response necessary crises as well. So this is, and I will just speak honestly, it is imperfect because it is multiple pilots running at once, and your next city manager will have to figure out, you align these pilots, how do you align these resources, and use this time to find out what is the best response, how do these things work together, how do they integrate into our dispatch system, what do we need and what do we not need, what is cost-effective and what isn't. If you think it's too much, or if it's the wrong setup, you can move within those If you think it's too much, or if it's the wrong setup, you can move within those different buckets, and we can discuss any one of them with you. But I want to be clear again, you have Help Team, Department of Mental Health, embedded in SMPD. We are...you have your C-3 and hamster teams out of CSD, and then the LA County Mental Health is free, you have already allocated that money, so that requires no funds, and then the CRU program is approximately $500,000 a year for firefighter prevention and firefighter paramedic prevention. So that's...it's a lot of services on the table, but I just think about them all together.
So does the CRU...I heard you say firefighter, one firefighter on prevention and one medic prevention, right? Do those have to be sworn officers?
The model proposed is sworn. There are other models that could use non-sworn personnel, such as social workers or mental health workers.
Is there a reason that...so a paramedic could be a firefighter, not a firefighter, is that right?
Do I have Tom Clemo on the call?
Yes, Lane, I'm on.
Can I let you jump in there?
Yeah, absolutely. Mayor, and members of the council, good evening. We already have firefighter paramedics and firefighters on staff, and similar to Chief Seabrooks' response associated with some of the more seasoned officers that are in the field, it's been our experience in the 2019 pilot that placing some of our tenured folks on that unit were certainly...it was certainly a recipe for success. So it would be our intent to move firefighter paramedic and firefighter onto that unit in a similar configuration to 2019, where we found that success.
Well, but you never tried anything else, isn't that right?
We have not tried anything else, that's correct, and it doesn't mean that we couldn't look at different options. We did find, in that 2019 pilot, that there were several resources available to us that we were unaware of before, and helped tie some of those together, including West Coast Care, which we are very closely associated with right now and prepared to amplify some of their services as well.
Well, so I heard from Ron about the work he's doing with you, and I'm intending to come to one of those sessions, but I think I've done ride-alongs with Ron, and that's really my question about the firefighter versus the non-sworn. So, and my sense is, and you can tell me that a firefighter is more expensive than a non-sworn officer, you know, on a per-hour basis, but if what we're looking at is medic services, or, you know, medical services and psychological services, that, I mean, it's great that your firefighters can do it, but would we be able to get the same service from seasoned medics who aren't firefighters?
It is a possibility, but to Lane's point, the meet and confer component of this is going to be critical to the success of the program.
But this is a pilot, right? This is a pilot.
We've done the pilot in 2019, and the proposal funds this for two years, as I understand it in the budget.
Well, so let me ask, Lane, are we bound by the proposal, Lane, or could we modify the proposal to have non-sworn? Because it's proposed doesn't mean we have to do it then.
That's correct. You could direct us to look at alternative models.
And I think in everything we're doing, we need to think about whether we're using the most efficient methods to accomplish the goals, and that's particularly true in connection with homelessness. So I know this is veering into discussion, but I need to ask the questions to get there, and I'll save my comments for later. How about that? Councilmember Brock?
Hi, Lane. My question, and I think I asked you this once offline, but the county mental health pilot program that'll be stationed at Old Fire Station 1, I had asked you before, is that going to be exclusive to Santa Monica, or is that for the entire West Side? Because that makes a difference in our reaction to it.
We are negotiating to make that exclusive to Santa Monica.
But has it right now, it's still West Side?
No, the MOU has not been signed, so our approach to mental health has been that it should be exclusive to Santa Monica.
And look, and I want the pilot, so I'm not...I just wanted to find out if it's something like I'm now finding out with St. Joseph's Center, that there...it's sort of random, or will it be a concentrated effort?
We will come back to you if, for any reason, it's not exclusive to Santa Monica, but our intention is to make it exclusive to Santa Monica and 24/7.
Thank you. And Assistant Chief Clemo, if you're still around.
Yes, Councilmember.
So, following up on what Mayor Himmelrich said, could indeed there be one paramedic and then one civilian on the CRU, because that might reduce the cost significantly? So, that's my question. And how successful was the pilot? I know there's a similar program in Long Beach and San Diego and other cities, though it has proven successful in other cities, and our pilot proved successful, moderately successful, wildly successful.
I would say, to your first question, yes, there is an option to provide, you know, a multidisciplinary approach to this. Again, to Lane's point, there are multiple programs that are going, and sometimes assuring that they're all working at concert has been some of the challenges that we've seen. Related to the success of the 2019 pilot, it was wildly successful. There were things that some of our most veteran firefighter paramedics did not know about resources associated with homelessness that they then brought back to train other, you know, the rest of our staff about what is available. The other success that we saw is it really developed an opportunity for relationships and leadership to help try to better case-manage some of the homeless, chronic homeless that we had experienced, and try to get them into the appropriate trap for treatment and assistance. And so we found significant success with the program.
And one last follow-up from that, Assistant Chief. So the pilot was successful with two sworn firefighters of different types on the vehicle. And if it's my understanding that it also reduced the amount of times an engine had to leave the station, does that mean that we also have to adjust our dispatch model?
To make sure that...yeah. You know, we found that we...well, to your first point about keeping the engines available, the CRU provides a tremendous opportunity in part. One, we often felt, find ourselves jumping from call to call and not being able to spend the amount of time that is really necessary to dig into some of the social issues associated with homelessness and provide the right services to that individual, so that's part one. Part two is it kept Big Red, as we call it, our engines available for more critical calls, especially when the system is busy during those peak periods, and the CRU provides that resource, and that's a really important point. The benefit of having the sworn paramedic and firefighter on that apparatus is our local EMS agency then views the unit as an ALS assessment unit, to be able to provide ALS assessment care and either cancel the engine, cancel the ambulance, or in some cases, potentially transport the patient to a mental health crisis center such as Exodus, et cetera. And there are three new options that we didn't have just a few years ago that allow us to transport to either a mental health facility, a sobering center, or some other form of homeless housing opportunity, and not to an ER, which tends to find ourselves waiting several hours to try to get a bed.
So you would...in order to do that, though, you need those uniformed personnel on the unit?
You do. In order to be an ALS assessment, that is one of the lens of requirements. You would have to register that unit with the lens.
And just added...I'm sorry?
I just wanted to clarify with the deputy chief. Both are one sworn.
Both need to be sworn, one needs to be at least a paramedic registered with LA County.
That's important for me to know, thank you. And the last question, or this is actually an anecdotal comment that would be a question as well. I had the good fortune of having a little kid's dream come true and got to ride on Engine 6 for seven and a half hours about a month ago. And a couple of the calls that we reacted to, one was a lady who was just had decided she was in a camp in the middle of a sidewalk on Ninth and Idaho. The members of the company who were...that I was watching that day said that if it had been a CRU unit, they could have stayed with her, but we were immediately dispatched from there to a convalescent home for a call, and then later that night to a heroin overdose. It made me definitely feel I didn't envy your jobs. So thank you very much for your service, and thank your officers for their service.
Well done. Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Parra?
Hi, thank you so much for answering our questions. I actually have another question for Chief Clemo. Is he still there?
I'm here.
Thank you. So, one of the things that you just brought up right now, that having the two sworn officers on the CRU now is viewed as an ALS assessment unit, does that also mean now that it qualifies it to be able to submit for some type of reimbursement for a potential transport through Medicare or what have you?
Yes, it does, and we've looked very closely at that. There is significant legislation that's coming, although it's not passed yet, which does provide for reimbursement for transport specifically for Medicare patients, which...or, excuse me, Medi-Cal patients, which largely are folks experiencing homelessness, and we've got a close eye to that, and we would like to be well-positioned for that as well. If we were to provide transportation to any of the...whether it's a sobering center, Exodus, et cetera, we would pursue billing for those transports, just as we do pursuing billing with our private ambulance provider, McCormick, today.
Great, okay, so that's the point that I wanted to make sure that everybody heard, is that this could essentially maybe not pay for itself, but it won't be a full $500,000. And have you had an opportunity, or has the department had an opportunity to meet or talk to Long Beach or the city of Montebello? Because from what I understand, both of those have extremely successful fire department-led homeless, civil or CRU units.
Yeah, we have spoken to Long Beach specifically about the program back in 2019, when we first stood up the pilot and received a significant amount of excellent guidance, San Diego as well. We have not spoken to Montebello that I'm aware of, but we have also spoken to LA City Fire that has multiple different units that are available to them for outreach that they've tried in pilots, which include both sworn and non-sworn opportunities.
That's great, and I also envision that this unit, especially being, you know, connected to the fire department, would be kind of another extension of the city in terms of getting information out, like health orders or health, you know, related type information, because we are so involved with, like this pandemic, as a fire department. So I think I also see this unit as an information resource in addition to everything else that it can help out with.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. And recently, we placed one of our DAFT 40-hour positions, two of them, on a rescue ambulance to do some homebound vaccinations. And when we find ourselves in that type of need, having that resource available to us is just another tool in the toolbox.
Right, because then, you know, that particular unit, if we had to vaccinate again, can actually act as a mobile vaccination unit to our unhoused community, and will be able to physically do it without having to have a Department of Public Health nurse with you.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you so much, Chief.
Yep, thank you.
So I have one follow-on, I'm sorry, before...yeah, and I saw you, Lane, but I just have one follow-on, and that's about...and Chief Seabrooks, I'm sorry, just one more. So it's my understanding that in the 2019 pilot, there were two male firefighters that were staffing that CRU, is that right?
Yes, we actually had a few different members on that unit throughout the pilot program.
But they were all male, and I'm not going to get into my issues, right, about this, but I think if you talk to Ron Hooks, he'll tell you that it would be ideal if there were a woman on each of those teams, and I have to say that, from my perspective, that should be a requirement of each team.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Council, I just want to quickly note, for everybody's benefit, Charter Section 610 says that except for the purpose of inquiry, the city council should deal with the administrative service under the city manager solely through the city manager. I just want to note that it...information about departments and department organizations, except for the purpose of inquiry, is for good government that has been in place for half a century through the city manager, and I am concerned about any multiple-hour interaction between members of the council and my staff without my knowledge.
You mean like ride-alongs, Lane? Is that what you're talking about?
I mean multiple-hour interactions with my staff without me even knowing about it. I just want to be clear, both with my staff and with members of the council, that that does interfere with the city manager's ability to run the organization, and I say that obviously not for my own benefit, because I'll be gone, but for the benefit of my staff, so they understand that, and of the council. I'm sure it was unintentional, I'm sure there was no purpose behind it, but it is really important, this is a council-manager form of government, and for us all to be successful, that is very important.
And you aren't saying we couldn't do it, you're just saying that you would like to know about, like a ride-along. Okay, thank you. Chief Seabrooks, I'm so sorry. Do we have any more questions for Chief Seabrooks? Are we down to that, right? You don't have any more of our questions on your log?
No, I'm going over it right now, and we've covered, I think, just about everything.
So do we have any more questions for Chief Seabrooks, or can she go to dinner now? Seeing no questions, I think you're free.
Great. Let me turn to Andy Agel with Community Services. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Good day. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Andy Agel, Director of Community Services, and I think I'll take our questions out of order, since you were just talking about homelessness, and I wanted to address one of the questions you had, which relates to thinking about our investments in addressing homelessness, and I think we're really fortunate that the budget makes a significant investment in these types of street-based interactions with people experiencing homelessness. We also want us to remember that that is one part of addressing homelessness, and that we also need to have services, we need to have interim and permanent housing, and this budget does provide for some of those. So for example, the deposit of the GSH, measured GSH funds into the Housing Trust Fund allows us to restart our affordable housing production and preservation program, and as you all know, creating permanent supportive housing has been an important part of that. So I want to mention one other really important piece related to addressing homelessness, and that is preventing homelessness, which is probably the most cost-effective and humane way to address homelessness, by making sure that people never fall into homelessness. And in your budget, there is funding for increased capacity to directly work on strengthening our infrastructure, our programs, and our services related to preventing homelessness, and I think it's a really important part of the overall continuum that we provide to address homelessness. And I think to the point of, we're trying different pilots, I think it's important that we're looking at what's making a difference, and also, how does it fit within the entire street?[1800.57] stream of how we're addressing homelessness? That if we put too much in any one area, there could be a problem in the pipeline. So if we've got everybody on the street making contacts, but we can't take anyone anywhere, we're going to get stuck. So I just want to frame that with respect to homelessness. And then what I'd like to do is keep moving through the CSD questions, and then the leadership team is here to answer questions if you need more detail. And so what I want to do next is move to Crest, and what I'd like to do, because we've got sort of up-to-the-minute news related to playground access, and I'd like to turn it over to the interim city manager to update you on that.
Thanks, Andy. So we have spoken with the school district about playground access, and I did confirm with the superintendent earlier today that there is one-time funding available in school district funds that they've received through the federal government as a result of COVID, to try to find programming to see us through this year, as we try to develop a program for the following year. So that is a very positive development, and hopefully one that helps to problem solve for the playground access program.
And I just want to add to that, that's really fantastic news, because when we were today thinking about how do we pull together the district, the city, the PTA, hopefully some nonprofit partners, what we were immediately struck with is, school starts in August, and we're at the end of May, and trying to pull something together in that amount of time? I mean frankly, if you told us tonight that we had money in the budget to restore the city program, even that is a short amount of time, given, as you know, recruitments to the city don't happen immediately. So giving us time to work together as a community, I think, is critical, and I think our gratitude to the district for figuring out how to do that and give us all time to work together.
So, Councilmember DeLittori, I think we're going to wait till the end, so write down your question and save it till the end, okay? Thank you.
So just to some other questions, which perhaps are less important related to Crest, given what we've just talked about, but I want to make sure that we answered them. There was a question about if ultimately the supervised playground program were to have fees, could there be a sliding scale? And the question is absolutely, I think you all know, for our Crest Club programs, for our Crest Camp programs, we offer financial assistance to low-income families, and that assistance can range from 25% to 90% of the cost of the program. There was a question about the average cost per student for the former Crest Sports Program, and that cost was $264 per student per year. There was a question about the Crest Educational Program, so Crest Club, which happens after school for fourth and fifth graders, as well as our Crest Camps, which happen during breaks and summer. And I want to just give you a sense of how that works. So Crest Club provides support such as homework assistance, simple things such as snack from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM after school each day, that's specifically for fourth and fifth graders, and it really complements the district's program that does the same thing for K through the third graders. And it is, I think the question, what related to, you know, is this something residents would choose? And I'll just give you an example of pre-pandemic, we had playground access, which was free, and we offered Crest Camps and Crest Clubs, and we had many, many, many families voting with their dollars that they wanted to access our Crest Camps and our Crest Club program, and saw the value in it. And at some of our school sites, we had waiting lists for families hoping to get into our Crest program. So I do think it signals that there is, that our families see great value in our Crest programs. And I think that's it at Crest, related to Crest, so I'm going to keep moving through other questions related to community services. So there was a question about the Community Development Block Grant, the federal funds that are allocated to Santa Monica, and specifically a question about how much of that money is going to the Pico neighborhood? So as you recall, last month, council approved the Fiscal Year 2021-22 Action Plan for CDVG, and that included $1.25 million in funding for the upcoming fiscal year. And of that $1.25 million, $800,000 of the funds were dedicated for capital improvements in the Pico neighborhood, and then about $200,000 of those funds were going to support human services programs, many of which serve the Pico neighborhood, though they also serve other neighborhoods. And then the remaining $250,000 was for the overall administration of the program. And as you know, the CDVG program is an annual program. We seek input from the various neighborhood groups, from the community generally, with respect to potential eligible expenditures of that money. And I think, as you all know, we're limited in how we can spend those monies, because they're specifically tied to those census tracts that have higher levels of poverty. There was also a question that relates to the Human Services Grant Program, and how are we addressing the evaluation of the program, the monitoring of the program? So one thing that I wanted to point out to you is that at your mid-year meeting earlier this year, you asked us that we make our regular monitoring reports available to the public. So as you recall, on a semi-annual basis, all of our grantees prepare reports, those reports, there's a back and forth then with the human services staff regarding what the agencies are doing, how they're meeting their targets. And pursuant to your request, we have made, let me first say, we spent hundreds of hours between the human services staff and our great colleagues in the city attorney's office, going through all of those, making sure that any confidential information is read acted. And all of that information is, has been made available on the city's website, both for the city council and for the public. I think that the second part there that's worth noting is that a really important opportunity to think about our overall network of human services providing is when we go through the requests for, included in your budget is one-time funding in the second year, that would allow us to hire an outside, really do that critical work of evaluating the programs, the proposals that we're receiving, and helping evaluate them and tie them to the critical needs in the community. So if that is approved as part of the budget, we're grateful that we'll have that expert outside assistance. There was a question about whether we have city employees working on behalf of nonprofits. And I know the council knows this, but I just want to clarify, because I think there have been questions about one program in community services and one program that's not in community services, but it relates to a department I used to be a part of, so I can try to answer both. So one of them is the Pier Corporation. So the Pier Corporation is a nonprofit organization that's responsible for promotions and events on the Santa Monica Pier. It is a nonprofit that has its own staff, it does not have any city staff, and it is, it's separate from the city staff who do work on the pier. So we have pier maintenance, we have pier custodians, we have city staff doing the leasing of the tenants on the pier. However, none of those city staff work for the Pier Corporation, they all work for departments of the city that ultimately report up through the city manager and are separate in that regard, and the Pier Corporation hires their own staff. The other example that I believe was brought up is the Police Activities League. So the Police Activities League is a city-run program with city staff. The city staff who work in the Police Activities League are similarly in the Community Services Department, they report up to the city manager. There is a Police Activities League nonprofit, and what their role is, is they are fundraisers for specific programs of PAL, and the two specific areas where they focus is, one is college scholarships, and the second is enrichment programs. And as you all know, those are really critical, the Police Activities League primarily serves low-income youth of color, the largest group of which come from the Pico neighborhood. And having those additional, having those outside funds raised to support things like college scholarships, like enrichment, is really critical. But that board is not responsible for the staff or the operations of the Police Activities League. All right, so I'm moving on to the Swim Center. So one of the questions was, are there things that we could do to enhance access by residents that don't participate in any of our organized swim groups? Now, I want to just give you a sense of, obviously, the Swim Center has many users. The way, I mentioned last night that there are pool allocation guidelines that govern what's happening at the Swim Center, and those first priority within those guidelines goes to the city-run programs. So those are things like lap swimmers, the Sharks Youth Swim Team, our swim lessons, our other water classes such as water aerobics, and those are, range between resident participation is between 86% to 99% of the participants in all those programs. So those really are heavily resident programs. Then we also have what we call permit groups, which are the swim groups that use the pool center, and of those, use the swim center, and of those, 11 of those 17 groups are based in Santa Monica, and to qualify as based in Santa Monica, over 51% of those participating in the group need to be residents. So obviously, one of the challenges is there's a limited amount of pool space, and relying on those pool allocation guidelines is really critical. Now, if you as a council were to say, we would like to shift the dial, as a policy, we would like to shift the dial and provide more access to the lap swimmers, those that are heavily residents, then you would need to give us the direction to bring back revised guidelines for the pool allocation, and we would, as part of the budget, would need to bring that back to you for consideration. What I do want to caution you about, when you think about that, is while there may be higher resident participation in lap swimming and in our classes, the swim groups do provide really important services, including things like coaching. And you know, for many of us, having coaching is really important, having that kind of support is part of it. And then also, for some residents, it's the way that they're able to access the pool. So for example, we've got nonprofits that specifically provide swim time for people with disabilities, who may not be able to just go and lap swim without that type of support. We've also similarly got groups that are specifically focused on seniors or youth. And so if it is something you want to consider in the long-term, or longer term, I just want to make sure that we're considering that balancing what's happening in the pool is balancing a variety. I also want to try to explain a little bit more about the fees related to the Swim Center. And I think one of the questions was if, you know, if we saw a 9% increase and a 10% increase over a short period of time, how could we still be within sort of the market range of where other pools are? And so part of the reason that we're still within the range of other pools, and I think, frankly, I think a big part of it is, is that we went for a long period without increasing our fees. So for our permit groups, we hadn't increased our fees until, since 2011, and then for our city programs, they've been in place since 2014. And part of what happened was some catching up, not that that's fun for any individual user or group, because a big shock is a big shock. But I do want to talk, when we talk about fees, there's just one thing that I think would be helpful to address, and less for the council, but more for the public. And the reason I want to bring this up is, I've seen a lot of vitriol towards the Swim Center staff over fees, and I just, I want to explain sort of how fees work in local government. So I don't think there's anyone who works for the Swim Center, or who works for our recreation programs, who is excited when we have to raise fees, right? Because who is the first to hear that, right? It's the people working the programs, and the customers say, why do I have to pay more for this? They don't want to do that, right? The reason we have to raise, we have to consider these is because we are funded by the general fund, we are subsidized by the general fund, and to the extent that we're not able to achieve a cost recovery that is aligned with your policies, it means that our colleagues in other departments are having to cut their programs. And so it's as much art as science to figure out what's that right place, and none of us want to do it, right? If we could do it, it would be free to go to the Swim Center, it'd be free to go to the skate park. But we are trying to get to the point that there's enough cost recovery, that our community can still access these amenities, but we're also not completely doing it on the backs of all of the other programs that you and the rest of the community value so much. All right, and I will get off my soapbox now, and let me see, I think that's everything from Community Services. And like I said, our broader leadership team is available if you've got more detailed questions.
Councilmember Para, and then Councilmember Davis, and anybody else, I'm lining people up, Councilmember DeLittori.
Hi, Andy. Hi, Andy, thank you so much for explaining that to all of us and to the residents. I just had a question regarding the increase. So I understand that you're trying to bring it up to what standards are, and you know, that makes perfect sense, but is there any opportunity, because we are still trying to recover, you know, residents are trying to recover, our swim teams are trying to recover from this pandemic, is there any way potentially that maybe we could hold off one year, maybe till next year for that 10% increase?
Sure, so to my earlier comment, we would love to not have an increase, it makes everything smoother at the Swim Center. However, in your role as policymakers, that means that there's less revenue coming into the city, and with less revenue, it means you're going to need to propose a cut somewhere else. I know that's not an easy answer, but unfortunately, as you all talked about last night, we're in this unfortunate zero-sum game.
No, I understand, we're just, like I said, we're all trying to figure things out and see what we can do to bring back and, you know, services and what have you for our residents. How much, do you know approximately how much this 10% increase in terms of revenue will bring to the city?
See if either Jeanette or Sam has that at their fingertips.
Would you like the overall revenue for the entire aquatics fee increases, or just for the aquatics youth permits? It will take me longer to calculate the first.
I'm just trying to figure out how much additional revenue will be brought in, period, with a 10% increase.
Let me make a suggestion, give us some time to do some calculations, and we can come back, even if you've moved on to another department, we can come back later in your discussion with those numbers.
Fine, thank you. And that's it for my questions.
Yes, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Agel, for that report. I do want to point out, you mentioned that in our Human Services Grant programs, that all of the evaluations of those programs are now available. I think you shared with the council a couple of, maybe a week or two ago, in particular, virtually every audit and review that had been done of the people concerned, which I know has been a bit of a controversial grant recipient, and as I read through those, I found that consistently there were no deficiencies or findings with regard to the people concerned. Can you confirm that, and tell me how the, you know, what if anything the city needed what, if anything, the city needed to do to address any of the concerns in those reports, if there were in fact such concerns?
Yeah, that's correct. So we gathered every audit, every performance review. We even gathered the surveys that are done by the county and didn't find among all of those a single finding in the audits. And it's, so certainly that leads us to believe that while there may be individuals that have had negative experiences, the audits show that there are not broader problems or challenges with this locally-based nonprofit that is critical to our infrastructure in addressing homelessness.
Well, and that was going to be my second question. I mean, what the people concern does to a large extent, as you said, is either prevent homelessness in terms of people who are in domestic violence situations or things like that, or provide services to people who unfortunately have already lost their shelter. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then finally, since that seems to be the one we've heard about, and you said that you posted the other audits and reviews, were any of those audits and reviews find any problems with agencies that have been receiving human services grants?
Yeah, let me separate out. So specifically for the people concerned, because we have heard from some residents' concerns about them, that would be helpful to take a look at what these other governmental entities have found. And that's why we post them separately. For the rest of our Human Services Grant program grantees, we have for many, many years done twice yearly monitoring. And so what's different this year is we've always, you know, that's been part of our process of managing the Human Services Grant program. And this year, what we did, what was different, is we actually made those available to the public. So that's specifically what we posted. And, you know, I think it's fair to say, if you look through those, you know, there's no agency that necessarily says, "100%, we hit everything." But this is really part of the process, is identifying, are there areas for growth? What's going really well? What are needs that we hadn't anticipated? And how do we continue to channel our resources? And then it is an opportunity, if there are real challenges arising, that we're able to identify them early and identify any necessary changes that may be.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember De La Torre.
Yes. Yes, Andy, thank you very much for posting those evaluations of the grantees and making it public. And I think that's great. That's a step in the right direction. Do you know, just, you know, we're talking a lot about racial justice and the organization. And do you know if there's one grantee, or maybe a couple, that are run by people of color? Like where the board of directors, the leadership of the organization is a majority people of color?
Yeah, so we actually do have statistics on that. And if you want them now, I don't have them at my fingertips, but I know that Peter's on our team does. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we have that data, you know? And I'm really glad that we do, because we just, we're talking about procurement, we're talking about grantees, we're talking about hiring practices. And so I just want to make sure that staff is, you know, has that type of, is gathering that type of data. So that's, I'm still really good about that.
You know, and Can I just say, without getting into the details, because part of it, we collect the data, but we also benchmark it. And I think one of the things that Santa Monica should be really proud of is that our nonprofit network, in terms of both people of color and women in both in executive positions and in board positions, is much, much higher than you'd see nationally.
That's great. That's great to know. And I look forward to reviewing that data, so I won't go deep into it. But thank you very much for that. The other question that I have is in regards to fees. And just on principle, what I would like to do is, in this budget, make sure that we are giving discounts to nonprofits that are serving residents and also a majority of students in our Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. So I just want to, you know, if we need to bring back policy recommendations to make those changes, to have, you know, that criteria to assure our residents that they are getting a discount. Because I know at the Swim Center, if you show your ID, you do get a discount. Is that correct?
Right. So most of our recreational programs, and this isn't just the Swim Center, we have discounts, residents. The other thing that's important to note is that for swim lessons, we also have financial assistance available. So similar to what I talked about with respect to Crest, you know, given how important it is that we try to make sure that every young person in our community is able to swim, we provide that financial assistance to make sure that it really does reach as many of our kids.
That's awesome. I benefited from that program growing up as well, you know? So I really appreciate that. You know, along those lines, like there was talk about fees even for the carousel on the pier. I don't know if this is, if you're, that might be the pier fund, but
Yeah, I think another department is prepared to respond to that.
Okay.
So can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Councilmember, just while you're on fees, can I just report back? So the revenue associated with the fee increases is $99,072. So let's call it $100,000 if we were to forego the fee increases at the Swim Center. And that may be germane to your later discussion about how you want to allocate.
Great. You know, as you know, this council has put homelessness and cleaner, safer streets as a top priority, aside with, you know, equitable economic recovery and other priorities. But definitely addressing homelessness and clean and safer streets is a major priority. And I'm glad you made the connection and you talked, because we are in this budget, and our city manager, interim city manager, Dill, talked about this earlier, that we are making a considerable investment in boots on the street, in multidisciplinary teams that will be, you know, doing direct interventions, especially with our most vulnerable homeless individuals, of course, experiencing mental health issues. And so I think that's very important to reiterate and to, you know, to speak on. You also talked about how, well, it doesn't make too much sense to have a lot of outreach and direct interventions if you don't have services and programs to connect these individuals to. Do you feel comfortable, you know, with the budget allocations on the services, you know, that we are funding, especially through our grantees? I mean, are we hearing from our grantees that they will be able to succeed with the allocations that we're making in this budget?
So we're in a tough place with the grantees. At the beginning of the pandemic, when we had to make significant shifts, we cut $1 million, over $1 million, out of our grants program, which averaged to about a 12% cut for all of our grantees. The proposed budget would restore half of that. So of the 12% cut would restore six percentage points, if you will. So that's, you know, if that's approved, that's better than where we were last year. But it's still a really, really tough time. And, you know, I think you all know that this pandemic has hit our most vulnerable residents harder than anyone else. And so, you know, it's, I can't say this is great. I mean, we're in a really tough position, because, you know, I would love to figure out, how could we restore the whole program? How could we enlarge it? Because, you know, as you know, our grantees are supporting our most vulnerable. This is a particularly tough time. But that said, restoring the whole thing is another, you know, five or $600,000. It's a lot of money, given where we are with the budget.
Yes. Well, we're hoping that, you know, as the economy recovers, we'll be able to restore some of those funds. And we know that also the economic recovery can't happen if we have some of the social conditions that our businesses are experiencing on the streets right now. So anyway, we're moving forward, and I appreciate all that. One last thing I want to talk about is in regards to partnerships with our school district. And, you know, I'm really happy to hear that there's, that the school district's coming forward with one-time funds to help with playground access. And there'll be some sports programs that won't totally supplant what Crest provided. But there is action there, there is a solution there. But one thing that I want us to do is, I want us to still coordinate an intergovernmental meeting to discuss effective after-school programs. And, you know, especially focused also on homeless students. We have about 70-plus students last fiscal, maybe like before pre-COVID. I remember there was about 70-plus students in our school district that are experiencing homelessness. I can only assume that since that pandemic, that that number has increased a little. And I want us to just make sure that we put that on the calendar at some point to have that type of gathering, so that we can have these discussions, to talk about strategic partnerships, you know, around after-school programs.
Oh, sir, you know, you see me leaning in. We're on questions. Questions.
Yes, I, Councilmember De La Torre, I did hear your question about this yesterday, and I can jump in and answer that a little bit. So we do have regular meetings among city staff, both with the school district. And I actually meet, I believe it's quarterly, with Dr. Jeffrey and Dr. Jotty and myself to talk about collaboration between SMC, the school district, and the city. In terms of all three boards meeting together, while that is something you could do, it is actually harder administratively than you would think it to be, because you would have to each decide about the agenda. What you absolutely can do is direct staff at any point to pursue a partnership on a particular topic, or direct us to collaborate in a particular way. If you wanted to have a meeting of the governing boards, we would have to think about how we would do that. That would probably be an agenda item other than the budget. But it would probably be a, we could certainly talk with you about what that looks like. I can tell you, even when the Housing Commission and the Planning Commission both meet, the agenda preparation and administration of who gets to talk and when and what order, et cetera, et cetera, gets complicated. And people have different jurisdictions. But certainly, we can collaborate in any moment, and I agree with you, we certainly should.
Well, it just came about in the, as we were talking about how we provide, you know, Crest and playground access, you know? So that's really, we're looking for solutions. And I'm, thank you very much for giving me a couple of avenues of how we can do that. Because we also talked about the joint use agreement. And an agreement is something that can also be put on the table that, you know, for us to revisit, you know, some of those topics as well. So in any case, we'll talk about that separately from this. But I'm glad that we have solutions for the services that parents were advocating for. That's it.
So I have one follow-on, Andy, to what you said, which is, because I participated in these rec programs, both with my kids and as an individual. And Santa Monica residents get early admission to the programs. So there are programs that sell out right away. I've been to a couple of them. And it's only Santa Monica residents. Because of the early admission, I think there's a week that they're open only for Santa Monica residents. Isn't that right?
So different ways and different programs. But yeah, early access is really how we're able to have the majority, if not 99% of residents. Can I just, because we're talking about playground access, I just want to make sure we remember one thing, that it's really fantastic that the district's able to step in for the next year and give us time to work on the future. And I just want us to remember that we may need, as the city, to provide some sort of gap funding, or whatever that future program may be. You know, we may not be in a case where fees paid by the families who can pay them covers the program costs, and the school district's got one-time money. They likely aren't in a position for long-term. So we don't need to deal with that with the first year of the budget that you're adopting next month. But as we work through mid-year and year-end, as we see where revenues are going, we may have to have this discussion again.
Thanks, Andy. Councilmember Brock.
So I want to start off first on the homeless issue. And I know we've had significant cuts. It has concerned me, and I've said this already in the last couple of meetings, and I've said it offline to all of you. But it concerns me that we have a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week homeless problem in our city. And we have unhoused people who have no place to get help on weekends, which is why I'm asking for HLP officers, why I'm asking for DMH personnel. You mentioned that we are still down approximately 50% of our allocations from where we were in 2019, if I recall. Or you said, out of a million-two or something, there was $600,000 that's still missing. So in order to get the homeless service center at a minimum up more hours than it is right now on Saturday, and/or a minimum amount of hours on Sunday, how could we parse that $500,000 or $600,000 fee and find out from the people concerned, what would it take to give that center or a C-3 team on the weekends? Either or. What would it take to do that? So that we at least have some services in the city on weekends, when I think there's even more stress on our homeless population? They're seeing all these people out having fun at the beach and shopping and eating out, and they're standing there looking in at the mirror, and it's sad. What can we do without spending $600,000 on that? Is there a way, I know you're not going to necessarily have that answer right now, but I'd like to have, I'd like to have that answer, not in terms of restoration of the entire missing budget, but parsing it to just, what could we do to have a minimum of services? West Coast Care have a weekend shift. Whatever way you want to parse it, you know, the least expensive way to still have somebody who can respond to people who are in duress. And I know we'll have the CRU team, I know we'll have other things. But they're all mentioning, and the chief of police mentioned, that we also have to have some place to refer them to. And so I think that's vitally important, and that's worth the extra funding. We can't say on weekend, we work only business hours for our help people. Back to the pool for a minute. This is, I guess, a big topic tonight. So I know we have a new aquatic advisory committee. I'm not sure what their charge is from the Recreation and Parks Commission, but I can tell you, having led the Recreation and Parks Commission for years, we never did fee increases annually. And I'm still somewhat surprised from yesterday from hearing that we did a 9% increase on swim fees during the pandemic. So I'd like you to, before you institute, even though I know it's $90,000-some-odd dollars, I'd like you to talk to the Aquatics Advisory Committee and have them and the commission review the increases in fees, and to make sure that the increases in fees for non-residents and non-resident groups are higher than our residents. So, you know,
Can I just ask a question for a second? Because it sounds like we're getting direction from an individual council.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying.
Okay, can I also just clarify that both the Aquatics Advisory Committee and the Recreation and Parks Commission have specifically discussed the aquatics fees and have made recommendations to the city council in that regard? So that has all happened.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you for that clarification. I didn't know that. Yeah, I just, I know people value that Swim Center. And they are really, and I'm not talking about the user, the Team Santa Monica, people like that. I'm talking about just individuals who want to go swim or have their children swim. Did we make progress on the Sunday swim time? Because I may have missed that.
So we haven't sat down with our colleagues in finance. But what we will do is, if they agree that our calculations make sense, and the, when the actual final budget comes before you for approval, there will be adjustments as part of that. And the revenue and expenditures associated with Sundays would be part of that. If it turns out that we were wrong and we didn't do the calculations correctly, then we'll let you know, we didn't do the calculations correctly. It's not customer-friendly.
So it's under consideration then. Thank you so much, Andy. That ends my questions.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Let me turn to Patty Wong in the library. Thank you so much, Ann.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Councilwoman.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before I start with the answers to the questions, I just wanted to give you some context, which is that I think many people are very excited about library services. We are too, of course, but the library is an ecosystem. And the reason why I bring that up is because a lot of people, when they come into the building, they think everybody's a librarian. And I wanted to just let you know that it takes a number of people to make the library work, librarians, of course, but we have library assistant twos and a host of other staff that help make it grow and make the magic happen. As much as we'd like to, full service will not go back to being the way it was before. That would require restoration of the $5 million that was cut. And just to give you some context, so pre-COVID, we had 112 FTE, we lost 65. Now we are challenged to provide core services, seven staff. So we've worked and reworked and reworked the numbers. What we wanted to maintain is that try the strongest service possible, but it will have to be at an abbreviated level. So let me just go directly into the first question, which was the 27 FTE I mentioned yesterday. That would go to fully restore youth and family services. It includes two to three days of service with limited hours at Fairview, Montana, and Ocean Park, so in-person services, and also allow for access to the second floor at the main library. The cost of that proposal is about $2.8 million. Now, that's not all for staffing, because we need to restore utilities, we need to have facilities maintenance, and we do need to have some supplies. So we heard loud and clear, I think that there was a little bit of a gasp. So we have three scenarios for you to hear about tonight. But beginning, before I begin with the scenarios, there's trade-offs that we are going to be integrating two of the current budget proposals in the scenarios that we've included. So that is one for expanded services and the other one for the library program specialist. So that's a total of $228,000. But we've integrated that in the proposals that we're sharing with you tonight as a scenario. Not included in the trade-offs are the two other proposals, library pages at 3.5858 FTE, which is at $145,000, and then the annual maintenance for the Open Plus system, which is $15,000. In addition to the scenarios we're identifying, we also need to work with our partner departments for ISD support and facilities maintenance and custodial. We've already talked to custodial. It would require at least one additional permanent custodian staff to cover expanded days and locations, because what we heard last night was not only that you wanted to restore youth services, but you would like us to explore expanded services at some of the other locations. So we have a combination of both those things tonight. So of course, restoring youth services is our top priority. Of course, our community needs youth services for the well-being of our families. In addition to recreational activities, literacy and education are also part of youth success. As members of the council and the community mentioned last night, more families and students will be coming to return in-person to the library. They're going to need support, activities, guidance, and places to meet. So we have talked to youth services team. They're going to be focused on centralizing programs and outreach. They're going to offer rebalancing programming and services for preschool, school-aged teens. They're going to be offering a hybrid of in-person and virtual programming. We will make technology available to bridge the digital divide. Collection development will still be a cornerstone of the services that we offer, books, materials, and readers advisory at all of our locations. After-school homework help and reading mentors at specific locations. We're going to move beyond our facilities to reach out to community partners, so working extensively with the school district and many other youth groups. Of course, our librarians as professionals can connect community services to libraries and resources, but we really want to make sure that there's quality and accurate information that will enhance our community's well-being overall. So the first scenario finds our focus on youth and family services and after-school support. It restores 14 permanent positions and the accompanying 3.9 FTE and as needed. So the total for this would be $1.9 million. With this proposal, we will be able to supply the following additional hours open to the public. Fairview, we would be able to open two days. Montana Branch, we would be able to add an additional day for a total of three days. And for Ocean Park, we would add one day in addition to the two days of Open Plus. So that's scenario one. I can go into the levels of details of staff if you like, but--
Well, so I have a question before you proceed.
Yes.
I know there were questions asked about this, including, for instance, expanding Montana, which we all didn't necessarily agree with. So I don't know what the options are. I know Councilmember Brock was intent on expanding Montana service, but I'm not sure for myself, given a choice between Montana and Virginia Avenue Park, that I would add a day to Montana. So I just wonder if you, you know, have thought about that kind of issue.
So the other scenarios actually address those--
Councilmember Brock?
The question about the day is, it's not that I'm intent on Montana, it's that I want services as much as we can split among the regions of the city and so that there are close areas. You have an elementary school and a middle school close to the Montana library. That's the reason for making sure we get some opening there. But my question was, is that just pickup services outside the library? Or is that in the library doors?
That would be in-person services, in-person services.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
So the next option offers slightly less coverage in our neighborhoods, but still focuses delivering youth and family services across the city. So that would be a restoration, 11 permanent staff and 3.2 FTE and as needed. Total for that is $1.5 million and would offer Fairview Branch open and an additional day at Montana and Ocean Park would remain open for two days. Okay, the third option focuses on restoring most of our youth and family services, but not as many additional days of service. That would be the restoration of eight permanent positions and 2.8 FTE and as needed. For that is $1.1 million. So with that, we would be able to restore service and to Fairview, which I think we heard loud and clear that you wanted distribution of services in the different areas within the city. And then the rest, the Montana Branch would open an additional day, but that would be offset by a one-day reduction at PICO, Virginia Avenue Park. And Ocean Park would remain the same. So those three scenarios, we thought would more approximate the goals of council to offer range of services, but restoring youth and family services and actually being able to open more hours at the other locations which are currently not open.
City Attorney Dill?
Yes, Patty, I'm not sure you and I totally connected on this. Does this factor in public works costs?
So we talked to custodial, and they said they would need an additional FTE in order for us to do any of these on their side, on custodial services.
Okay, so I think, you know, this, council, this obviously is a study session. We want to provide you costs. I think there might be some additional work we would need to do internally on some of this.
That's absolutely true. We would need some additional support, the other department.
Any questions for Patty? Are you done, Patty? I'm sorry--
I am done, I am done, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Brock, Councilmember McCowen, and then Mayor Pro Tem McCowen, I'm sorry.
So scenario two--
Yes.
That sounds like our middle of the road that may give us an optimal amount of service that allows Fairview to open, how many days a week?
Two days a week.
Okay, Ocean Park is, I'm just, I'm asking this just to make this clear. Ocean Park, the Carnegie is open?
The Carnegie--
As they self-serve.
Remains part of the Open Plus, which is self-service.
Okay.
But we could move, you know, one of the things we had heard yesterday, but it doesn't have to go that way, is there is an additional day at Montana, which we could perhaps move to Ocean Park.
Okay, so the main library, the second floor, would also open under this scenario?
Under all of those scenarios, the second floor of the main library would be open.
Okay, and we'll have security personnel and staffing to make sure everything is--
Correct, that includes any of the extra staff that we would need.
Okay. And PICO Library is open how many days?
Right now, it's open five days.
It would be--
When we're open, yes.
Under scenario--
Plan for five days.
That's good. And Montana would be open three days.
Under this current scenario, under option two, yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Councilmember McCowen, Mayor Pro Tem McCowen. I'm going to get it right nicely.
It's, it's-- So Patty, I obviously, you know, want to see more services restored and more options. I think these numbers, though, obviously, given the fact that there's nothing, are still kind of high. And so when we're thinking about what we would give up to expand our options at the library, I'm just hoping that maybe over the next month, there might be some other options that you guys can bring us later that are potentially a little less, but still give us a little bit more. And do you think that's fair? Or is this really, we either go up to, you know, at least one of these options or there's no real in-between from a staffing perspective?
So in order to accomplish both opening Fairview and adding back all of the youth services team, which actually helped to function to open up the buildings also, we could come back, but I think it's going to be probably not that much less than the 1.1. But I don't know, I've got Erica and Norma lines too, and I don't know if they have any comments about that.
Yes, Patty, let me jump in here, because I do think we're a little bit of a point-of-process confusion, which is created by the fact that our study session went two days. So in the study session, we get feedback from all of you on the proposed budget, and then we will go back and work with all of these things to do the best we can to try to meet the things you've raised. But I think, you know, first of all, I want to be clear that, you know, a statement by one council member is not direction from the whole council and that we have only had, you know, we ended last night with you at midnight and started again at 5:30. So staff has worked very hard to get cost estimates and other things that I think will inform your conversation and help us to get to a good place in the study session. We will then have multiple weeks to try to work with and to try to-- and I want to particularly thank all of my staff who came forward with solutions a mere 12 hours later. But we will have some weeks to try to work with these things.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Patty? And let me say one thing, I'm sorry, Councilmember Brock. So I assume that we're going to be making priority between, let's say, one, two, and three, that if our real priority is youth services, right, then we are on three. No, that's not the way it works, yeah.
We won't even ask for that much detail from you. We'd like to hear from each of you what your overall priorities for the budget are and what the trade-offs that you see would be. And then we will have to work with that, recognizing that the trade-offs in this environment are extremely challenging, but we don't need priorities by department from each of you.
Great, Councilmember Davis? I'll go back to you.
Well, that just raises the question. We're going department by department where they're answering questions where we all spit-balled wish lists last night. And all we're doing is digging our budget hole deeper. I guess my question, Ms. Dill, is at some point tonight, are you going to tell us what we would have to give up in order to prioritize some of this? Or are you just going to give priorities and then come back on the 22nd and say, well, fine, if you want to do, you know, spend $1.2 million at the library, then what you're going to lose is this amount in the police department or in homeless services or in street cleaning or whatever. I mean, because that's obviously the choice we need to make, is what are these trade-offs? And I just don't know, are we going to hear about that tonight? Or is that something we're going to hear on the 22nd?
Councilmember, and I will turn to our CFO as well. I don't have a lot of trade-offs for you, because we have already cut this budget to the bone last year. So in terms of efficiency, streamlining, et cetera, that is what we have been desperately doing for the last year. Layoffs, we have already been through. I think what we will be looking to you for, we are still trying to answer your questions, which we've been at for quite some time, so I do want to be sure we keep moving. After all of the, I'm not considering any of this feedback or discussion. I'm certainly listening and attentive. But I then will be looking to each of you, what is your response to the proposed budget? What are the things you, what are the trade-offs that you would make in the budget? And certainly, you know, I can talk about the trade-offs I would make in terms of things that I think we could cut, but they are very minimal. And Gigi, do you want to jump in on that process?
I agree with you, Lynn, I think that, you know, we cut everything whenever we had a penny. We worked very hard to figure out where we absolutely, absolutely needed to put those pennies. We are at that point. And it will help us to understand what your priorities are, but more than anything, it will help us understand where you would be willing to trade something off. Because to us, anything that's in the budget right now is essential.
So do we have, yes, Councilmember Brock?
Hi, this was a quick question to Patty. The second floor of the main branch of the library, how would you rate that in essential services compared to the branches and the first floor of the library?
The main library has all of the material. It has a bulk of the staff, and it is the largest resource that we have to support the rest of the branches.
I'm asking if the second floor was kept closed and just the first floor opened, would that free resources for the branches to make sure that they were viable?
Most of the books are on the second--
I guess, here, my question is, what would we lose if the first floor was kept open, the second floor remained closed? Because that makes, it may not make sense, but I know--
No, no, no.
Children on the first floor, book stacks are on the first floor.
Well, the other thing that we have on the second floor, which we also want to remain accessible to the public, is our study rooms and our meeting room spaces are up there and the bulk of the nonfiction collection. So, you know, I think it's almost asking me which children I like better. I don't know, that's a pretty tough, that's a pretty tough call. I'm sorry to answer it that way, but--
No, that's fine.
In many ways, we want, we want to have as many resources available. And definitely, students and children and teens actually use the second floor.
Thank you.
And the periodicals are on the second floor, too.
They are, they are. It's really hard to remove all of the materials and bring it downstairs, it just--
Yes, City Manager Dill?
I apologize, just to be sure we're factual. I did just hear from our Director of Public Works that we would need the FTE custodian in additional, in addition to $192,000 for contractual services, which is part of the problem we encountered with the facilities in the first place, is just that they are facilities.
So that would be about $300,000 all in, or $350,000?
Uh, somewhere around there, Rick? I think it's safe to say, yes, somewhere between $350,000 and $400,000.
Yeah.
Correct.
Thanks. Any more questions for Patty? Thanks, Patty.
Thank you.
Love the library, see you soon.
Bye-bye, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, who's next?
All right, thank you, Patty. Let me turn to Jennifer Taylor or CBD.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, nice to see you again. So, um, question that was posed last night for us is in regards to rent abatement program for city tenants. Why is Burgamot only three months? Uh, the question that it should be six months, and how will the program determine eligibility without inter- without intervening in private finances? So I just wanted to say, um, on April 13th, when we came to you last about the rent abatement program and the rent deferment program, uh, you directed us at that time to look at a nine-month, six-month, three-month abatement program. So nine months for our nonprofit tenants, six months for our pier and ocean tenants, and three months for Burgamot and other for-profit tenants. And then a motion was made to have staff consider whether we could also explore six months specific for Burgamot tenants. Um, and we were anticipating a report back to you on June 22nd to have, uh, to explore the trade-offs regarding the different programs. Um, you know, we also know Pier had asked for some additional considerations for, uh, extended repayment program and potential, uh, reduction program. So I just wanted to show you that the 2.5 million dollars of the ARPA funds that are targeted for the rent abatement program would fully fund the nine-month, six months. So the nine months for the nonprofit tenants and six months for Burgamot and all other for-profit tenants. However, um, what we were hoping to explore with you on June 22nd is an opportunity to really explore trade-offs. Um, you know, as as one of the lead staff for the city's Economic Recovery Task Force and really trying to look at opportunities for equitable and inclusive economic development and recovery, we were trying to look at, so just doing the nine-month, six months would result in supporting 79 of our of our businesses, which is great. But if we repackage that to do three months for Burgamot and the for-profit tenants, um, with the nine and six for the others, the the nonprofit for nine and six for the, uh, for the pier and beach tenants, which were heavily impacted because of physical closures on the beach and pier, um, we thought we could also then, with that 2.5 million dollars, help up to 292 businesses across Santa Monica, not exclusively our city tenants. And specifically, we heard loud and clear at the council meeting on April the 13th that many of our cultural arts and nonprofit tenants are very terrified about their ability to survive. There was very strong sentiment from our residents, community leaders, business leaders, um, uh, famous actors, Bill McDermott was on the call, to ask for, uh, the council to consider additional funding for, uh, cultural arts and nonprofits. So part of what we wanted to come back to you with, with the package on June 22nd for the 2.5 million, was including a grants program dedicated to cultural arts nonprofits, not city tenants. So this would help to support many other ones who have actually don't have the benefits of having landlords like ours that can help to do a abatement program. Similarly, um, we're hearing directly from our our restaurants, and we're going to be coming to you on June the 9th to look at, uh, the extension of the city's, uh, 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 emergency orders, particularly for Santa Monica outdoors, for our restaurants to continue to use public space, but with fee waivers. So that, that's about $500,000 there, so that would have been included in the 2.5 million dollars. So we we have, so there is funding for you to say nine months and six months and call it a day, but the trade-offs would be that we wouldn't have funding for continuing to extend for fee waivers for, uh, our restaurants, um, for all the sidewalk dining, as well as the parklifts. And, um, we also would not have funding to restore maybe a cultural grants, uh, program. But we're hoping, like I said, just to explore that with you on June 22nd. Um, there was also the question related to that, um, about how the program will determine eligibility without intervening in private finances. So best practice across all grants programs, even across our city's commercial eviction oratorium program with rent deferment, is that businesses have to provide to their landlords, in this case to us, the city as their landlord's evidence of hardship. So, uh, this is not a, uh, an unusual request. Um, generally, it's in the form of a profit, profit and loss statements, or it's in the form of tax returns. So 2019 versus 2020 to show 25% drop in in revenue. Um, we feel that it's very important to request, since we have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure the city funds are going where they're most needed. Um, so I would be very concerned if we were just offering grants in the form of abatements without asking for any kind of hardship request. Um, similarly, we have been working so hard and and very closely with all of our tenants and with all of our 9,000 businesses here in Santa Monica, to help them to survive, really help them to access federal, state, um, and county funding support, including where we've launched, we had just today, uh, a call with our Chamber Foundation for the Santa Monica Small Business Recovery Grants Program. The intent is that all these other funds are also going to help our tenants, as well as our businesses. So part of our strategy was, let's let's earmark critical funding that's needed now, but with this 2.5 million funding, or or as our city recovers, let's see who truly is still having a hard time, who's not able to access additional funds, who is struggling with with, uh, rent repayment, so we can help them at a later date. So those were some of the considerations we were trying to give. Um, and so I just wanted to explain kind of the difference between the nine-month, six months, and three months. But there is the funding there if you choose to do nine and six months, and then it'll be done.
Thanks.
And then, um, I'm sorry, I can, I was also asked to speak to the carousel, and and that'll be done, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. So the carousel question is, what is the fee rate? Uh, does it matter based on age, and couldn't, could it be reduced for residents? So the current fee rate at the carousel is a dollar for children ages three to 14 years old, and $2 for adults. We are proposing raising the carousel fee to $3, for children and adults, with the exception of children three years and under, would be free with a paying adult. Um, the reason behind this is that the carousel is heavily subsidized by the city's general fund. Um, we have not raised ticket prices for the carousel in over 10 years. Um, we're well behind. Uh, we did a a fee study looking at other carousel rates. Um, the typical rates are $3 to $5, so even with the $3, what we're proposing, it's it's below what what our, a lot of our competition is already. The $3 would help us in achieve a 99% cost recovery for the carousel. And so just to also say, like, that we have not raised the fees in 10 years, our operating costs have increased dramatically in 10 years. So just that cost to, uh, continue to restore this beloved historic carousel, um, the the fact that, um, that Roth Management is our vendor, so because our city vendor, they're subject to paying living wage costs and rates, which continue to go up. Um, just the, all the additional costs incurred due to COVID in terms of capacity and cleaning and and things with that. So, um, that was why we were proposing. We thought it was time to 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 try and align, um, the carousel fees, uh, to something where we could achieve close to cost recovery at 99%. Um, but have it for little kids three and under would be free with with paying adults. And we looked at potential for doing a, like a special fee for residents. Um, when we did, no other carousel operators did locals discounts. Um, when we talked to, uh, our 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 operator, we found it's, it would be very difficult to to implement a residence-only special or rate, um, because it would be additional staffing, and you'd have to ask for people's evidence of, you know, their driver's license or something to show, show that they live here. So, um, we, and that would add to more staffing then, which would add to more costs. So that's why we recommend the carousel rate at $3. So I'm happy to answer any question.
Councilmember Brock?
Hi. So the carousel, um, what would be the loss if we went to $2 for the the children, teens category? How much would we lose? Here's, what's our percentage of children, teens versus adults?
Oh, I don't know the percentage of the ages. I know that we did do, we costed out if we charged adults $3 and charged kids and teens dollars, we would get to 86% cost recovery. So that would be a funding gap that the general fund would have to fill of $96,000.
Well, all right, I lost something there. So what is our, if we do the increase, what is our annual gross receipts then?
So with the increase.
Yeah.
You were projecting, um, nearly, just trying to see here, uh, $289,000 for gross receipts for ticket sales, and then we also generate some revenue based on the events. That would basically get us to the gap. The cost to operate is about $326,000 a year, so the $3 would would get us close to the 99% with the events picking up a bit.
Good.
Any more questions?
Um, let me, uh, let me then turn to Gigi.
All right. My lighting is terrible, and I'm going to overexpose. So, um, before I, before I get into answering, uh, the couple of questions that I have, I did want to go back to what we talked about before, which is, um, priorities, and how we have, you know, we actually have not gone once to cut back this budget and try to figure out what our highest priorities and what our essential services are. We, this is our fifth time in 12 months. We started last May, that was the first time with a big cut. We came back at year end in October, and we had CARES funds to cover, to, uh, to allocate. It took us, we went through every single department in the city to try to figure out where we were having severe service gaps, and we covered those service gaps. And those were, uh, we covered them on a one-time basis, because the gap, the, um, the CARES funds were one-time. We came back at mid-year, and we allocated, um, funds, um, funding from, um, vacant, uh, officer positions, um, in the, um, police department, and we moved a bit of funds over to other, other sort, other uses. And again, it was areas where we were desperately in need of help. We came back again in April, uh, when you helped us, uh, appropriate the funds, the initial ARPA funds. We are coming back again now. Uh, so every time, it has been pretty much every two or three months that we have been coming back and trying to reprioritize and take a look, and the few funds that we have, we have put exactly to fill the holes in our budget that have been in desperately in need of of filling. So, um, when we're saying we don't have trade-offs, it is the hardest year ever to even come up with a trade-off. We have, we literally are putting Band-Aids all over our budget at this point, just to keep us going for a few more years. Um, and we're not out of the woods yet. So I I'm going to get off off my, uh, little lecture stand, and and I'll I'll go back to, um, questions. So the question, one of the questions I had was whether we have an ADA coordinator, and, um, what would the cost be of hiring one? Well, we do have an ADA coordinator. They are in the Finance Department in our Risk Management Division. Um, the, um, the responsibilities were actually transferred to to my department, um, right before the pandemic. And so this position is, um, you know, has been with us for a little over a year, and it is evolving, and, uh, we are becoming more and more, uh, involved in the various, uh, areas, uh, involving, um, ADA, uh, issues. Um, so what the position does is we receive complaints and, uh, requests for accommodations from the public, um, related to equitable access to city facilities and public spaces and any city programs and activities. And then we, uh, as a coordinator, or our coordinator, works with departments to respond. Uh, we respond to any questions, uh, requests for information from residents and city staff regarding ADA compliance, and then we, uh, work with the city attorney's office on any cases where we need to get, uh, legal advice. Um, and so, uh, it is happening. Uh, we are in, um, constant contact with our ADA coordinator, because, uh, they are in our, in my department, and so that's the answer there. Um, uh, we also, I also had a question about, uh, whether the reductions to our executive pay plan salaries had been continued into next year's budget. Uh, those, uh, reductions to salaries were a one-time, uh, one-year reduction. And so the fiscal year 21, 22 budget is, um, have it, the salaries revert to the old levels. Those were, that was the end of my questions.
Thanks. Any questions for Gigi? Uh, seeing none, so so now we're going to move to the meat of the meeting, which is our discussion, and, oh, sorry, Lynn.
Mayor, sorry, I'm I'm playing up here, uh, and I have only 80 questions to address. Just kidding, I have two, um, uh, that are the the last ones. Um, can we create an economic development plan to encourage hiring our residents in areas outside of public works? We do have an Economic Sustainability Strategy Program that is looking at strategic workforce development and local hire recommendations to try to bring to you. So, um, that is something that we are looking at. Uh, neighborhood associations, um, are on the website, and I believe it's Santa Monica, Um, so so those are up. Um, ultimately, you will need, um, uh, the program of matching grants and and the recognition criteria, um, for for what is a recognized neighborhood group, which is what you have had in the past. In terms of matching grants for equity, um, we don't know, uh, in terms of weighting those grants for equity, we don't know exactly how we would do that, um, but when we brought the program back to you, that could be discussed. Um, and with that, um, unless there are questions there, uh, I think that is all we have, and unless we have missed any questions, we did try to get everything that you raised last night. Yes, George?
There was one question, um, for me, which came from Mayor Protem McCowen, which was the the 3.5% salary cuts, as I mentioned, for our attorneys. Um, those were two-year cuts that they took voluntarily, so those do carry over to next year. And in addition, um, when I became interim city attorney, I took a 20% cut, which remains in place indefinitely.
And I'm sorry, I forgot a news on racial equity.
So, but but, uh, George, I want to thank the city attorney's office. You guys are are taking it. Uh, yes, Councilmember De La Torre.
I really appreciate the staff that voluntarily took the salary, uh, reduction, and I know it was, um, a 20% cut for, I think, the top administrators in the organization, and and, um, I know that, uh, interim city attorney Cardona said that it's indefinite for him, but is that for all staff? Is that the case? Or that 20 cent, 20% reduction, uh, can we, uh, expect that, expect that all those, uh, staff members will be, uh, taking that 20% back next year or in the following years?
That is unique to me, because it is in the contract.
Oh, okay. So that 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 is important there, I mean, for us to consider, uh, for for those staff members, I mean, we're still in the hole, we're not out of it, and and I was wondering if it would be possible to request, even on a voluntary basis, um, an extension of that until 2023, 24, when it.
So Oscar, Oscar, when we're done, I'm going to be asking for priorities, right? Because we're going to be get, going to be able to get an answer, and if that's one of your priorities, right, put it, write it down, and you can say that, okay?
Yeah. Mayor, I actually.
Um, go ahead, George.
No, go ahead.
Um, I I did hear a a question in there, and and I do, you know, want want to answer that. Um, while you certainly can ask staff at any moment to take a voluntary reduction, I took a voluntary 20% reduction.
I took a voluntary twenty percent reduction and it is in my contract, so it will stay with me, uh, sent, uh, until I go. Um, do I love working at twenty percent less than my predecessor for a job in a year that was arguably harder? No. Does it, uh, impact my morale? Um, yes, it annoys me. Um, I, I did it because we were laying off staff and we were laying off staff at every level of the organization. And it helped us to hang on to people who we could support this year. So last year was our lowest year. Those cuts enabled us to make sure that we could be in the position we are in now, which is that we have a stable budget and it lifts up from here. And I think that department heads, um, who, who took cuts were willing to do that for the good of the organization. Um, but that is, it would be a very different question this year to say the, the salary that you were hired at, that you have gotten your mortgage on, that you, um, are, uh, that you are, you know, were offered by the city as part of your employment. Um, you know, will you voluntarily, uh, step away from that, uh, after working in a pandemic? Um, you know, many onsite in a pandemic, um, for, for the good of this community? Um, I, I will be honest, I would say no. Um, that would be my answer, would be that we, we did it, but this is, um, you know, this, this is a job and it's a very, very hard job. Um, but, but let me, you know, I think the other thing is that, that these things, obviously, um, in addition to morale and, and other things, um, you, you could lose people, which I think you know, people could, um, uh, choose to retire or, um, take employment elsewhere and they could do so in large numbers at a moment of considerable transition. It would impact your city manager, police chief and fire chief recruitment. Um, and, and I think that Lori can also speak to where the, the cuts put us in terms of, um, other things. But I guess I, I don't want that to feel like an easy answer because it would be an answer. Uh, the other thing you would have to look at is differentials between, um, we have some department heads who are working at less than others. I'm working at less than many of your sworn police and fire. Um, and, and I guarantee, um, you know, my hours, uh, without overtime, et cetera. It, it, it's much more complicated than just saying, hey, let's do this. It's, it's a major organizational impact and it requires HR analysis.
So may, may I add to that from the audit subcommittee and, uh, because we did do a comp study in the audit subcommittee and, and we looked at various positions throughout the organization. And the, um, the, our department heads who took these cuts, um, were not relative to department heads in other comparable cities. And look, it's been a while, but were paid comparable to other cities, not excessively. I mean, if there was an issue according to HRNA, I'm sorry, to, uh, Moss Adams, it was in the next level down and not in the department head. So i- it, it's on the audit subcommittee website. Um, I can send it to you if you want, but it is worth looking at because it's not that sort of, uh, and now, it's not the kind of analysis where you just go, everybody is this or everybody is that. It, it's much more granular and I think it's much more helpful than thinking of it as just, uh, uh, one big group of people. If that makes sense to you, but I'll send it to you if you want, Councilmember De La Torre. Uh, Councilmember McCowen?
Yeah, and I just wanna say, Elaine, um, thank you very much for, um, you know, personalizing that, expanding on that. I, I had asked, uh, that question too yesterday because a caller had sort of alluded to this idea that we should reduce staffing, um, costs, um, in order to pay for these additional services. And, and I, I do think that we have a responsibility to the residents, but we also have a responsibility to run this city properly. And for all of those of us that have taken pay cuts voluntarily throughout this pandemic, it, if you're forced to do it and continue to do the work and more, it, it really does, um, trigger some challenges in, in morale and other things. And so I appreciate you putting, um, that perspective out there for us and for the residents that are watching. Um, I think it's important that everybody understand, um, what's really going on and that we're not compromising programs necessarily in order to staff our city at a level that's still very much reduced. And so I just wanna thank you for, for expanding on that a bit tonight.
Yes, and Mayor Kurtz, I would say the other thing is, um, it, and I don't remember exactly by, by labor group, but, um, most of our labor groups did, um, you know, agree to no COLAs, et cetera, in addition to layoffs. So there were additional reductions across that actually will hold us lower than, um, uh, much lower than where we would have been in prior circumstances that are already baked in, that are different than voluntary cuts.
Yeah, and we, we see that in police and fire and several different departments that we saw some of those things. And we also saw in the headlines, you know, cities that didn't negotiate that stuff, that then had huge deficits as a result. Now, they were also bailed out, some of them, yeah, with, with COVID funds from the feds. But, but yes, thank you.
Um, Anuj and Debbie, I think you have two more cleanup questions and I apologize for, for missing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And I'll try and keep this very brief. Um, I was, um, just, uh, on deck to address the question that was raised last night, um, uh, which was, do we have the right investment in the CMO to succeed in our equity efforts? Um, whether we need an equity inclusion office or a designated equity staff person and whether we are currently budgeted appropriately? And, uh, from our perspective, I think, um, you know, we, we feel we can confidently state that we have, uh, the right investment for where we are now, um, as an organization. As you heard, um, last night, we do have, um, two staffers. Uh, one Lisa Parsons in the CMO currently as our special assistant to the city manager for, for equity and community recovery. Um, and Delaina Benakama, who is our equity and communications coordinator, working citywide, currently out of Public Works. And we are recommending, um, that her position be transferred to the city manager's office. Um, and, um, all of Delaina's, um, work and, and, um, the, uh, the bulk of Lisa Parsons' work are dedicated to citywide, internal-facing as well as community-facing equity initiatives. Um, in addition, of course, um, you know, you did hear all of that, the tremendous work over the last year of our equity and inclusion officers representing every department last night. Um, and, you know, in terms of budget, we have, um, you know, the, through the council direction over the last year, provided, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for the inspector general for the public safety reform and oversight commission, um, thirty-five thousand for public safety, um, commission training, a hundred thousand for language access recommended in this budget, an additional fifty thousand for racial justice recommended in this budget. Um, and, um, we have earmarked, um, you know, in, in the prior year, um, two-hundred thousand dollars for racial equity, including, um, money to the black agenda and money that has been used for cultural celebrations, um, and advancing our EIO work. So, um, you know, I think that the questions with regards to future, um, staffing, future resources are certainly ones that the current EIOs are working on with the, uh, racial equity action plan citywide. Uh, but I think, you know, we, we certainly made a tremendous deal of progress in the last year. Um, we're definitely, we like to say, we're, we're building this plane as we fly it, very much so. It's a work in progress. Um, but I think for where we are situated now, um, we do feel confident that our resources, our staffing are well-aligned, um, to support our equity efforts.
Thanks, Anuj. Um, Debbie?
Thanks, Anuj.
Good evening, councilmembers. Um, the question that I'm responding to is how much it would cost to restore statistically valid surveys? So we use a variety of survey methods to gauge our community throughout the year for different projects and programs, some with the objective of assessing sentiment and encouraging engagement. Most of those surveys, um, meet, that, that meet these objectives are relatively straightforward. We handle them in-house and they're low-cost because we use existing technologies such as, uh, Survey Monkey. We also use method, methods that require statistically valid surveying. In these instances, we work with an outside consultant. Um, if we were to apply statistically valid surveys for all of our work, there's a variety of options, um, as far as methodology, that range in both price and timeframes to complete. Um, one example of surveys, uh, in, in using voter registration lists, for, for instance, aims, uh, for an adequate sample size of about, uh, five hundred respondents. That cost is about thirty thousand dollars and it takes anywhere from two to three weeks to complete that analysis. However, using voter registration lists, uh, would not work for surveys in most instances, um, like resident satisfaction surveys, as they would exclude non-registered voters and not support the equity values of this council and our community. Thus, it would require an investment of approximately fifty thousand dollars to, um, per survey to ensure that we can invite a balanced sample size, translation and an now, and analysis of the data. The timeline would, uh, for this type of work, approximate, takes approximately two to three months on average, although sometimes it, it does take more if it's a complex survey. So hopefully that answers your question and gives you information and feedback on, um, the complexity of some of these, uh, decisions on how to do, uh, statistically valid surveys. If you take any questions that you might have.
When was our last statistically valid survey, Debbie, and what was it, please?
Uh, there were two surveys that were done, um, within the last couple of years. Um, in twenty-eighteen, we completed the resident satisfaction survey. Um, that has always been a statistically balanced or valid, valid survey. Um, and then we do surveys throughout the, uh, other surveys throughout the year. The last time, um, we did, uh, a survey was for a ballot measure in twenty-twenty.
I think Councilmember Parr has a question. Yes, Councilmember Parr?
Hi Debbie, thank you so much for those stats. Um, I just had a quick question. Do you by chance know how much it costs the city for the two thousand and eighteen, uh, resident satisfaction survey?
That, that came in at about fifty-one thousand dollars to complete, fifty-one thousand.
And then if, let's, if we wanted to do it today, um, would it still cost around that much or would it cost more?
It would cost approximately the same. Um, and, you know, I, I don't wanna go into the sort of details, but there is complexity around phone interviews in the world of cell phone use at this time. And lots of people don't have LAN lines. And so that is why the cost is so high and why the timelines are so high.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. And that, I think, finally does it. Thank you, Debbie. Um, thank you to, to all of the staff. I, I think that answers our question. Uh, I'm sorry, City Attorney Cardona?
If you're gonna go to discussion, I just want to do a final reminder that this was agendized as a study session. Um, so under the council rules and the Brown Act, the council cannot take action. Um, so there's not gonna be any recommendation or votes for recommendations. It really is just hearing from councilmembers, um, as you expressed, your, for staff to then take back and bring back on June twenty-second. Um, so that's how this has been agendized and we have to do it that way to comply with the Brown Act.
But I do have three motions on my cheat sheet, George.
Um, those are not, I don't believe those are things on which you are going to move or take votes. They are simply the actions that you're going to be taking.
So receive an IO kind of stuff.
Received that, you, it won't be received and filed, there won't be a motion for that. Um, and now we're in the review and comment on the various things, but that will be done on an individual council member basis, um, without a vote or direction by the council as a whole.
Good. So, a- and Council, this is what I'm gonna recommend that I think will, um, sort of make this balanced and, um, a- and will give us all a chance to express what we want. So I, uh, I, my, uh, idea is to go around the loop, basically, and have each person pick three priorities and anything that they would be willing to sacrifice in exchange for their, those priorities. So, it, do you understand what I'm saying? So, yes, Councilmember Davis?
Well, I, I guess the problem I have with the sacrifice part of that is if I say, yeah, I wanna sacrifice, um, I don't know, uh, uh, traffic enforcement, I don't know how much that costs. I mean, I, I, that's, that's my problem is, I don't know if a trade-off would be an estimate.
Well, I, I think, um, I do think that that's a difficult part of it, but we did get a fair amount of cost here, particularly for additional items. And, and I think that you could say, well, I would like to do more youth services and less, you know, uh, whatever. Again, uh, a- and, uh, a- and I think that's the best we can do. We can say the things that we care about. And then in response, staff will bring us back a, a budget that addresses the priorities that each of us expresses to the extent possible. But I'd be interested to hear from the city manager to see if, if that is what you're looking for.
I'm actually gonna turn to our chief financial officer, simply because she's been through this study session more times than I have.
This is a topic, and I don't know that there is a, an easier way to do this, but I would say that it would really help us if we understood pretty much what, uh, Mayor Hemmerich said, if we could understand the areas that you are more focused on and potentially less focused on. Uh, it will at least give us an idea so that we can go back and, um, cost out proposals and see where we could potentially, um, cut back some services in order to take, uh, on the services that, that you're interested in. And then we can come back to you in final changes. And if it's not something that you like, then maybe we keep it the way it was or, you know, do some, at that point, we can make motions and we can have a better idea. You can give us actual direction.
Can I just ask how, how specific you want us to be? I mean, you said general areas. So if someone said library youth services, or do you want them to be more specific about one of the scenarios that, that Ms. Wong gave us? That's what I'm trying to figure out. I mean, I have some very specific priorities that I don't think cost a ton and a half of money, but I don't know what we would cut to pay for them. Um, but I guess I can try and cogitate on that. But, or if someone just says, well, I wanna do youth services, that could be ten dollars or ten million dollars. I mean, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out is how specific do you want us to be?
So Gigi, uh, we're having real trouble. You're sort of breaking up. I'm sorry, maybe if you lean in.
Oh, I would, I would, uh, say that, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
So where you got answers tonight from staff? If that, um, if you can get to specifics, if you can get to, you know, in some cases, we just have to be realistic. I, I, the library proposals were very high. Um, so where you, we, where you can be specific and tell us, you know, I, I want the PSOs or I want the help team or, uh, I want, uh, the library, you can do that. If, if you give us, if you say we need to expand the library, in all likelihood, all we will be able to do is the lowest level, frankly. Uh, and even that, I don't know that we're gonna be able to do. I mean, this is, this is.
Yeah, I mean, here's, here's the other way to say it. This is feedback, not direction. So, you know, if, if you were to provide us ten million dollars worth of things that you would like to see, that doesn't help us a lot because we can't do that. Um, so it, you know, it's, it's feedback, but it, it doesn't particularly help us to get to an adopted budget, um, that, that we need to get across the line that is actually realistic and makes sense. So the more specific you are, the more likely we are to be able to get it done. And the more realistic you are, the more likely we are to be able to get it done.
So, do, let me try by going first and let's see if this is what you're looking for, okay? Does that work? I mean, somebody else, oh, yes, Councilmember Parr, you wanna go first?
No, I just have a process question. Um, in terms of, um, just to confirm that I, I understand this correctly. So you want us to give you our priorities and then some of the things that we think could be pooled or what have you. But does that include, cause the priorities that staff has already identified in the report? So since they're already there and I'm good with those, you know, as is, do I still list that as my priority or do I talk about other priorities?
Good question.
Does that make sense?
It, yes, but crew, for instance. Yes, crew, for instance. I mean, that's a really good example, right? So who appears to be in the budget? CRU? Right, right. So that's in the budget, I think, and I'm guessing Christine, among the other things you're thinking of, is something like that. So you, so, but it seemed optional, so I think if it were, if you do want to see it remain in the budget, I think that, tell me if this is wrong, you should say, I'd like crew as proposed by the fire department. Like that?
Yeah, I think for, for the things that we are adding this year, if they are high priorities for you, it would be helpful to hear that because those are some of the, those are some of the areas we would look to potentially cut if you give us things that we don't, I mean, those are things that are not operational right now, so they are easier for us to cut from the proposed budget than, than other things. Gigi, do you agree with that?
I do. You know, the, the things that we added to the budget this year, you know, for the proposed budget, those, we took the priorities that you voted on a few months ago, and that is how we took a look at, we had many more proposals, and this is what we landed with going with the priorities. So yes, if those, I mean, I would definitely take a look at those because you put up the numbers there. As Lane said, they're not operational yet, and those were our interpretation of your priorities. So they could also be things that you don't think necessarily fit within those priorities, so they would be your trade-offs and they would be easier to trade off. And again, I'll just reiterate that anything that's in the budget right now is pretty much keeping the city running.
So, does anyone want to go first? Nobody wants to go first. Let me give it a shot. Oh, good, great. Councilmember Parr, then Councilmember Dilatory, then Councilmember, Mayor Protem McCowen, and we'll take it from there. But thank you for volunteering. I really appreciate it.
I'll take a stab at it. I know I've said it before, but again, I just really want to thank staff again for the great work and explanations. I've been involved in this process before personally, so I know how difficult it can be to, to put this together and to scramble to answer our questions. So I really appreciate that. And so, so moving forward, under the community priority, that, everything that has already been identified to support our homeless community are a priority to me. Obviously, my number one priority is the CRU unit, but also the West Coast Cares, money allotted to West Coast Cares, the multidisciplinary teams. The, the positions to help support the homeless services, those are extremely important as well. So pretty much everything that has already been proposed under community priorities for addressing homelessness, those are my priorities as well, so they align very well with, with my thoughts. Under Clean and Safe Santa Monica, the Reed Ambassador Program, I think it's important that we continue that at minimum, but also really look at other ways to maybe try to activate that space so that everybody can use that space, especially the green space. So that's important to me as well. Under Equitable and Inclusive Economic Recovery, the 2.6 and one-time funds, that's super important to me to be able to make sure that we can help out our tenants and small businesses as much as we can. And then a bunch of the other things that were a high priority have been pretty much addressed today. So the Crest Program, the Playground Program was really important to me as well. The, oh gosh, so many notes everywhere, I'm sorry. The public, the if, if, this is my wish list, is the addition of public safety officers. I think that it's really important, especially in this, in this day and age and what everybody's experiencing and feeling about walking around the streets of Santa Monica. I think the more staff, law enforcement, you know, public safety officers that are out there to offer support would be really important to us. I'm especially concerned about this because of some of the conversations that are going on out there right now, especially by Sheriff Villanueva and the work that he's going to be trying to do to clean up Venice Beach. And so I'm concerned that we may have an influx of a homeless community coming into Santa Monica. I want to make sure that we have resources to be able to address what that may mean to us here in Santa Monica and that we're keeping an eye on, on what's going to be happening as a result of some of his efforts. And so, and then libraries also, anything that we can do to make that happen in any way, I would strongly support as well. I think that's it.
Thank you. That was great. You did great. Councilmember Dilatory.
First off, I want to thank staff for all the great work and answering all our questions. I personally feel that staff did a very good job, and so I wanted to just acknowledge all their good work. The second thing I want to do is support everything that Councilwoman Christine Parr just said. So all the things that she supports, I support wholeheartedly, especially with, just, I want to emphasize the multidisciplinary teams, leading direct interventions, servicing individuals that are suffering from mental health issues in our city is a top priority. So I'm really glad that the budget, even though these are pilot projects, and some might be more expensive than others, I do know that we will be definitely looking into making adjustments as we move forward, but I'm very happy with that. I do want to support the FTE increase in finance, but I do also want to include as part of the job description, if possible, and that's one question that I have in terms of process, like supporting a position, but I do want to see, you know, more, more emphasis on diversity and procurement initiatives in that department. So I don't know how, you know, not, not seeing the job description and so forth, I do want to increase staffing for that department, but I also want us to look at our equity and inclusion and diversity initiatives and how we might be able to gather baseline data, research best practices, and develop protocols for outreach and providing technical assistance so that we can expand the, you know, minority and women-owned businesses or historically underutilized businesses in our procurement strategy. I also want to make sure that we support youth services. So I'm glad that we heard solutions from the school district, you know, for these, these services, crest and playground access. But I also, you know, want us to think, you know, ahead, and it's not really a budget item, but it's just, you know, staff has also just talked about how we will have partnership discussions on how we sustain these programs beyond the one-time funding that's being provided. So I do want us to just keep that on the radar. There, the, the support around preventing homelessness, especially supporting our seniors, the protecting our diversity program, definitely support that. I think that's a big priority. And the other, the priority of restoring staff in our permit specialists and, you know, making sure that...
Oscar, I feel like I always do this too, and I hate to do this, but you're being really specific. And I think, and I think what we're, but tell me, Lane, is he telling you what you want or no?
Yes, I think, I think we are getting what we want. I mean, I, I, and yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Lane, for helping me out there, because Sue's always...
I'm with you. I'm completely with you, Sam.
Not me, I'm...
Anyway, thank you, thank you. Sue, thank you for keeping me in line. I need, I need that help, so I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not complaining, I'm just congratulating the process.
Good, no, I hear you. Go ahead.
So another big priority for me is giving our residents a break, or anything around fee reductions for our residents, you know, or nonprofits that service our students in our community. I want to keep the carousel one dollar for adults, children, whatever. That carousel has to be one dollar, so with...
Oscar, I have to break in for one minute about this. Do you know those dumb little pony rides that you get on, like outside the supermarket? I just saw one, not even here, right back east? Two dollars. For those little things, right? Those little things where you put your little two-year-old on the horse. I'm just telling you that one dollar for the carousel is a sort of absurd price.
No, I know.
Add ice cream. Oh, no.
So, so I'm thinking like, I'm thinking, you know, if you're a mom, let's say you're a single mom with four kids, you know, that's three dollars a pop, that's 12 bucks. So that's why, I'm just trying to keep it a dollar for residents, you know? So I'm thinking, I'm looking out for people that, you know, three dollars might be a little too much to get on a basic ride. We keep, we keep the pier, we keep some of our public space as free as possible or as low as cost as possible, then people can get out the house without having to spend money. And that's just kind of my thinking on it. I want to support our trade interns program, but I love the concept of finding creative ways to fund it. So if we find enterprise money, I heard, or other interesting sort of creative funding strategies to make that happen, that's totally fine with me, you know? And I applaud staff for making that happen. The, the Downtown Santa Monica Inc. ambassadors are on the front line of clean and safe streets, you know, a big priority for us, and also homelessness. I just visited them today. Their work is outstanding for the downtown area, and I want to make sure we keep supporting them. The, in terms of the park planner, making sure that we have, you know, the, I think it's a one FTE for park planning, you know, we have, you know, parks coming online, I totally support that. Did I say the permit specialist and making sure that David Martin has anything he needs to help these businesses move forward? Those businesses open up, you know, as soon as they can open up, we get more tax revenue. So it's a win-win for everyone involved and also for employees, especially if we're doing more local hire. That's, oh, last thing I want to talk about in terms of priority is when we say equitable economic recovery, making sure that we're looking at, at opportunities for entrepreneurship, you know, makers markets, supporting, you know, opportunities for our, our residents, you know, to, to participate in the economic recovery of our city. So those are my, my priorities. And of course, public safety, which we have a very robust budget, you know, there's no change in the budget, a hundred million dollars, plus everything else that we're adding on, I think, is all in line with us supporting our public safety personnel and our men and women in uniform that are on the front line also of keeping our city safe.
Thanks, Oscar. Councilmember McCowen, I'm actually just going around the screen, I'm sorry.
No, I echo a lot of what Councilmember Dilatory just said, but I'll just, another tough one. So for me, when it comes to the addressing homelessness, the things that were the highest priority for me of the new funded options were the ones that we already know are effective. So the 1.4 to maintain the homeless multidisciplinary street sweep increases in the human services grants program, two million for the, for the help teams, 480 for CRU and the 210 for West Coast Cares. We know these are tried and true, and so that, that was important to me. I think we need to increase street sweeping frequency. I think it has to happen. I think we need the revenues from folks that don't move their cars. I think it's kind of a win-win, and there's not much else that we can swap those funds out for. I do want to echo, similar to Councilmember Dilatory, though, what we talked about earlier, that if we can, you know, because it is in line with our equitable and inclusive economic recovery, to the extent that we can keep any percentage of our trades intern program by looking for new innovative ways to use other funds to possibly fund it and provide the educational opportunity, I think that would be really innovative and, and, and just a good opportunity and in line with our priorities. And I want to maintain the Reed Park Ambassador Program through downtown Santa Monica. There was also, and I don't think it came up tonight, but asked to look into the one-time funding to get the ice rink up and running, so I just want to make sure that didn't get lost in the discussions. And then on, you know, we, we have to get our permitting process a little bit more streamlined. I think any of us on council hear about this all the time. It does increase revenue, it does get our businesses back up and running, so I think that's important, as, as well as the funds from the ARPA that we had suggested to go to help one-time funds to help out some of our struggling businesses. So and emergency assistance for vulnerable Santa Monicans, that's, that's important to me. I also want to just sort of broadly, if we're able to navigate and find some, you know, prioritizing youth services at the libraries, so if there's a way through the, the expansion as we're already doing it, to really prioritize the fact that there are going to be young people in the fall in need of more options at the libraries, so just keeping that in mind with the reopening process. Not an easy task. And to the extent that we can expand crest options with some of whatever you all magically come up with over the next month, that I am so grateful for the news on playground access because, you know, I'd spoken with residents about this, I'd spoken with staff about this in advance, I think this is absolutely the outcome we wanted, which was some version of a collaboration over this next year before we can get back to our funding levels, and so that was really good news. And then crossing guards, to the extent that we can potentially find access to revenue outside of our general fund, that might be able to do some crossover to get us additional crossing guards at the schools. I think it's critical because it meets some of our public safety priorities as well. So to the extent that that's feasible in any way, those would be my priorities, understanding, of course, that much of this is not going to happen.
Thanks, Mayor Protem McCowen. Got it. I put a note up.
Be a little different than everyone else, because I'm going to sort of assume that the things, for the most part, that are in the budget will stay in the budget, and therefore really want to talk about very specific things, which I think are, are relatively small marginal increases that we might be able to find funding for through alternative methods. I'm not going to say I want to prioritize youth services. I think we all want to prioritize youth services. So we all want our libraries to reopen. I think this is a question of it's a zero-sum game, and, and, and contrary to your instructions, nobody's been saying what it is they want to cut to get to these things. So I'm not going to do that either. But so I'm going to focus on very few things, very specific things, with the notion that of things that are already in the budget, I support. So the first one is I want to reiterate, I think, the ice rink. That can come somewhere from one-time funds, and I do think that has the potential to ultimately pay for itself by bringing people downtown who will shop and eat, and will see increased revenues, sales tax and other revenues from that. So I do want to emphasize the need for the ice rink. I agree with Mayor Protem McCowen, I think we need to fund, I believe Chief Seabrook said for a hundred and some odd dollars, we could fund some additional crossing guard sites, and I think we should try and look hard to find that money. We obviously want our children to be safe as they go to school. I think I agree with... I think I agree with the comment you suggested, Mayor Himmelrich, that it's stunning that crossing guards are not paid for by the Safe Routes to School money. That's a shocker, but so be it. We don't have time to address that now. But I think for a relatively small investment, we can make it safer for our kids. I also want to look for a creative way to maintain some the trades interns program for some, for some number of people, whether it's by placing the responsibility in the enterprise funds or doing a little robbing Peter to pay Paul. I also want to emphasize, it sounded from Mr. King, that we could use Big Blue Bus money to help fund some public safety officers. And I think if we can do that, that will not be a drain on the general fund, but will increase the perception of safety in our downtown area. And oops, I can't even read my own writing here.
Hold it up, Glenn.
Okay, there it is. Hang on one second.
Well, here's what works for me, right?
Uh, let's see.
We'll get back to you.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me try and figure it out because I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out what I tied it to. But I think those are really the key, you know, for me and as well as, you know, obviously, I support the things that are already in the budget. So I'm not going to reiterate what everyone else says. I'll raise my hand when I can read my, my last entry. Sorry.
Great. Or just, yes, thank you very much. Councilmember Brock.
Okay, let's see. The CRU has requested, I think is an important element and is needed in the city. I want to add a provision, I don't know if this is legal or not, but I'd like to have one staffer on the vehicle always be female. So I think we have a lot of females who are homeless females who are in need, and it's appropriate to add a female to that CRU unit.
And thank you, Councilmember, for supporting me on that. I really appreciate that.
No problem. And it's, look, it's a matter of supporting the women who will be serviced.
I agree.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Obviously, I gave you a PSO, an HLP, and a DMH team request. I believe it's vitally important to fund those. There is a SMPD officer that is funded outside, by the police department, but is to a youth program. We fund approximately 1.5 FTE to the Police Activities League each year. We are in dire need right now of police officers on the street. And so I would like for the 2021-22 year only that that one SMPD officer, patrol officer, be transferred back to the department. We have an urgent need for officers because we have so many people who are out on leave right now. And they'll still have a lieutenant and a sergeant who are assigned, and they can always ask for volunteers from the police department to give them help as well. The ice skating rink electrical fix, that's obviously a necessity. The ambassador program should be continued at Reed with a slight adjustment. I would like a bathroom attendant and a safety ambassador on duty at all times. I know that I heard that there are sometimes three people requested there. I don't think there's any reason to have three personnel there. But I would like to have one safety ambassador, one bathroom attendant on duty. So it may be a slight adjustment and maybe a slight minimal decrease in annual cost. The swim center, Sunday hours, that's a no-brainer. It needs to be restored. The partial reinstatement of crossing guards has the SMPD chief talked about. I think is a good plan. Level-two library access, there were three levels. And yes, the wish list is, of course, to have level-two library access. Pickleball, the fastest-growing sport. You know, we need to, as we get a park planner on board, to look at finding more time for pickleball and find courts that we can convert. I know our tennis players are rabid about tennis, but pickleball now has hundreds of thousands of people. And there's even now a pickleball tournament, I understand, coming up on ESPN. So we're a beach community where people can be outside. Let's see what we can do as we get a park planner in and see if we can find a way to share the cost of that. Same thing with Fisher Lumber. Maybe Public Works can start to look at at least one of the outline hangar buildings at Fisher.
You know what you're doing. You're giving direction about how to do it and not what to do. We need to talk about Yeah, you are. You're talking about how to do it, and that is not in
Fisher Lumber remediation and a reminder about the Reed Park dog planning during the 2021-22 year. You know, I'd like to work more closely and have economic development, work more closely with DTSM to help them really revitalize downtown. And there's a reason for that. And this, yes, may be a short statement, but it ties in, it ties in with questions. Everyone needs to realize that spending money to get control of homelessness, which is why I'm asking for those homeless resources and enhance safety in Santa Monica comes, will have added revenue because businesses will be quicker to reopen. And people who will decide to stay home or move to Santa Monica will see we're clean and safe, and they will visit Santa Monica, open businesses in Santa Monica. So it's all tied together, and I'd like to see that. Street cleaning, return to weekly, I'm fine with it. Permit processing, I know we're asking for three, I think, two and a half, three FTE. And I think that's fine. I hope, and I don't remember if that was in the budget request, that we're actually asking for the new software and the programs to make sure that we become much more efficient and user-friendly. And I know we're way behind on that. So I fully support the expenditures for that. The trade intern program, I didn't know much about it. And I'm really happy that I learned so much about it over the last 24 hours. I think it's a really valuable program. And if we can find any way to provide funds to make sure that our young people find substantial jobs and trades that can help them in their life, I think that's a wonderful endeavor. And West Coast Care, I believe the fire department has already said they will fund the increase because right now they were only funding 210. But I think I read that the fire department is going to fund an increase to the 210. And I see Lane sort of squinting that maybe I'm wrong. But if I'm wrong, then I would like to request that the fire department fund an increase to the West Coast Care budget because I think they're doing valuable work. And I'll rest.
Thank you, Councilmember Brock. So now to me, the ice rink, yes. The crossing guards, to the extent possible, yes. Lead ambassadors, yes. You know, I've taken a lot of heat as an affordable houser for agreeing that homelessness should be our top priority. But I do think that this is a human tragedy that we need to make a dent in. And I do think we need to help people get off the streets. So I am yes, 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 on all of the human services programs that aid the homeless and also prevent homelessness, including, of course, the POD program. And I'm looking forward to expansion of that program to people who aren't seniors in terms of a a minimum basic income kind of program. But there are a couple of things. So I basically am seconding everything that everybody has said without adding anything except that I do want to add this that I think can contribute to cost mitigation. One, to the extent that we can use non-sworn versus sworn officers to perform tasks that aren't directly in the job duties of sworn officers, I believe we should. To the extent that we can use pilot programs instead of permanent programs to figure out what the best thing is, I always have thought and continue to think we should. And finally, as I said yesterday, and I think we've seen it a bit in housing, I think that there are grant programs out there that can really help us add some of the things that we'd like to add, but don't have the funds to do. And I know that we talked about this last night. So I'm hoping that we can find extra funding through grant programs, whether through our lobbyists or through grant writing, et cetera. I know there are some people in the city who are excellent at it. And I also would like to see some of the enterprise fund money rather than general funds be used for the trade interns. I think that there's room in the enterprise funds for training in industries where these folks can be trained and will get jobs at the end, whether it's in the Big Blue Bus mechanics or, you know, and I understand we've been doing it a little bit different. But I really am thankful to staff for thinking about this creatively. And I'm thankful to staff for thinking about all of this creatively. I remember this time last year, and half of you weren't here at this time last year when we were doing this. But I am so thankful to our interim city attorney and our finance director because I remember this time last year when they went through this budget and basically did the groundwork for what we're seeing this year and what we saw last year. And I want to say that I received phone calls from people who used to work for the city. We were doing this budget, telling me that we should just leave it the way it is, keep going, and we would be fine. Well, let me just say, had we not done what we did, we would not be fine. Right? We would be in a big fat hole that we aren't getting any funds to bail ourselves out of. So I am so grateful to you for doing this work and for hanging in there with us, Lane and Gigi and all the department heads and all the other staff, all 64 of you who are on this call. Thank you so, so much for your work on this budget.
And Mayor, I'm sorry, but I finally could read my writing.
Oh, good.
My last priority was making sure that we give appropriate relief to our tenants and in particular, support the arts in Santa Monica, both nonprofit and for-profit enterprises. And I know we're going to discuss that on the 22nd, so I won't be any more specific than that. But I know we have $2.6 million allocated, and I want to make sure that we continue to try and maximize our support for the arts. Thanks.
Thank you. So how do we do?
So council, thank you so much. We have a lot of constructive things in here that I think we can work with. We do everything we can to try to work with what you give us. I want to remind everyone, because I don't want there to be disappointment. Obviously, it is a study session. We can't take direction from an individual. But this does give us a really good roadmap for the work that we need to do over the next couple of weeks. So I want to thank everybody for their attention to it. Most of all, I want to thank Gigi and Oscar Santiago and the entire team because they have done extraordinary work. And Gigi, can I ask you to thank everyone again? Because it really is the people behind the scenes who are doing this work. You know, my face is just here on Zoom. It's really everybody else.
Yeah, I would just like to thank, of course, Oscar DeCar, who has been the mastermind behind the projections that we are so on point on. Oscar, who's been working round the clock since he started, brand-new budget manager, started in October, and he's done an amazing job. And we have a very new budget team as well. Jonathan Tang, Jennifer Young, and also Lori Ko, new. And this is, hopefully, we'll have some easier budgets ahead of us. But I did want to thank every budget analyst across the city. We have many people across the city who have been working round the clock since last May, since last, well, actually, since last March. And their managers, and of course, their department heads, and everyone that they've worked with to come up with even the questions that you asked yesterday. Takes a lot of time to figure these things out. So I thank everyone. Couldn't do it without this team, an amazing team. Thank you.
A big thank unto you, Gigi. Boy, thank you so much. And on that note, if we have two adjournments tonight, and so Phil, do you want to go first?
I will, if I can unmute myself. Sure. We're adjourning tonight in memory of John Miskowski, and I'll probably, I probably messed up John's name. But with great sadness, we adjourn this council meeting in memory of Public Services Officer John Michael Miskowski. John passed away May 24th here in Santa Monica following a battle with cancer. John was hired as a park ranger by the Santa Monica Police Department in September of 2006. That's how I got to know him. John's position was later reclassified to a public service officer. Prior to joining the Santa Monica Police Department, he was employed as a police officer with the Chicago Police Department from 1970-73. But there's more to John. John was a TV writer, episodics. John was an improv master who taught improv in Chicago and ran the Improv Institute in Chicago for over a decade. He also taught improv at the Gem Theater in Garden Grove, California. He was one of the pioneers of improv as an art form in the center of improv, which was Chicago. So he, I looked at John's Facebook, and I know his son works for the city as an information coordinator and rent control. But as I looked at his Facebook, I was struck by so many people that he had touched during his lifetime. And I hope that his wife Catherine, his three sons Nathan, Michael, and Mika, and Mika's daughter, his granddaughter Cora, I hope they're all so incredibly proud of, in this case, his granddaughter Cora's grandfather. And on behalf of the entire community, we convey to his wife Kate, his family, friends, our deepest condolences. He was, as a park ranger, he was this person who was friendly to everyone in the community. So I will miss him. I know so many in Santa Monica Police Department and people in all the parks in the city will miss his friendly countenance each and every day. John, we'll miss you.
Thank you, Phil. And now it is with great sadness that we adjourn this city council meeting in memory of longtime city employee, motor coach cleaner Reginald Reggie Buckner, who passed away on Friday, May 21st. Reggie joined the Big Blue Bus team on August 27, 2001. And from his arrival, he demonstrated both a sense of care and enthusiasm for his job. In 2002, when Big Blue Bus commissioned the Liquid Natural Gas LNG Fuel Farm in Fuel Island and also purchased 37 LNG buses, Reggie was ungaunted by the new fuel technology. When the new buses were delivered before the Fuel Island was completed, Reggie rose to the challenge and volunteered to fuel the 37 buses himself in the BVB yard. He quickly learned the nuances of the LNG fueling system, became the resident LNG fueling expert, and went on to train others through the years. In 2009, when Big Blue Bus purchased compressed natural gas buses, Reggie once again took on the task of fueling the new vehicles and thereafter trained staff. He enjoyed sharing his knowledge and for several years worked as a lead motor coach cleaner. To his colleagues, Reggie was a consummate team member. He was humble, kind, and always had a big smile on his face. He was proud of being a city employee and always volunteered for anything new and was always gracious. On behalf of the entire community, we convey to his family and friends our deepest condolences. And thank you, council. Our next meeting, we have, our next meeting, we have a special meeting on Wednesday, June 2nd at 6:00 PM. And on that note,
Real quick, Rigoberto Huerta, a young man from the community, also passed away. And I just, we will adjourn. And I just, we will adjourn his memory as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And on that note, we will adjourn. I hope everybody gets a good night's sleep. Good night.